You guys wait.
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call to order this meeting of the Capitola Planning Commission. I want to welcome everyone who's here this evening and who may be watching from home. Just an announcement to begin, this meeting is being cable cast live on Charter Communications, cable TV Channel Eight and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel Ninety-Nine. It is being recorded and will be replayed next Monday and Friday at 1:00 PM on Charter Channel Seventy-One and Comcast Channel Twenty-Five. The meeting can also be viewed at the city's website at www.citycapitola.org. And tonight our technician is Lynn Dutton. With that, we will have a roll call, please Jackie.
Commissioner Newman?
President.
Commissioner Smith, here. Commissioner Welch?
Here.
Commissioner Westman?
Here.
Chairperson Story?
Here. Well, everybody stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next on our agenda is oral communications. First, we'll begin with additions and deletions to the agenda. Staff have any requests for additions or deletions?
We did receive two additional materials for item five D for forty fifteen Capitola Road, a letter from the attorney as well as a letter from the architect. And those are available at the back of the room and you each have one at your seat. They came in at twelve, around noon, and the second one came in at 5:30 PM this evening.
Thank you. Any other commissioners, any additions or deletions to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comments. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the planning commission on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone there who would like to speak on some other item? So, it looks like we're all here for an agenda item. So, I'll close the public comments portion of the meeting and we'll go on to commission comments. Commissioners, I'll start with my left.
Just a reminder that this weekend is the car show that's put on by the Public Safety Foundation, so it'll be a lot of fun Saturday and Sunday.
Thank you for that, Linda. Next, we, our staff comments?
No comments.
Okay. We'll move on to approval of the minutes. This is the planning commission regular meeting of April fifth, twenty eighteen, and item number two, regular meeting of May third, twenty eighteen. Maybe we'll deal with the April fifth, first. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve them.
Or second?
Or second.
Any member of the public wish to comment on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sounds like the motion passes unanimously, Jackie. The next item is approving of the minutes of the regular meeting of May third, twenty eighteen. Is there a motion to approve or any changes?
I'll move to approve May third.
I'll second it.
All right, motion and a second. Any member of the public wish to comment on those meeting minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes unanimously, Jackie. Next is our consent calendar, that's item number four. These are routine and generally uncontested items. And we have two on the consent agenda tonight. They're concerning seven thirty-four Orchard Orchid Avenue and forty-seven ninety-five Garnet Street. Is there any commissioner that wishes to pull one of these items? Seeing none, is there a member of the public that would like to pull one of these items for further discussion? Seeing none, I'm gonna...
Mr. Chairman, may I ask if you do them one at a time?
Yes, I will do them one at a time. We'll begin with four A, which is seven thirty-four Orchid Avenue. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as drafted.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and second. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, Jackie. The next item is four B, which is forty-seven ninety-five Garnet Street. This is an application for a design permit to add a new roof.
I will recuse myself from this due to property in the, within the distance.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
All right, thank you.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously with one recusal. That brings us to the public hearings for this evening. The first public hearing is five A. And that's concerning coastal development permit for property located at six twenty Monterey Avenue. And we will begin with a staff report.
Good evening, commissioners. Before you this evening is a coastal development permit for the new school, for additional school buildings at six twenty Monterey Avenue at the New Brighton Middle School. Schools are not reviewed by the city, they're reviewed at a state level. And therefore, we don't have much criteria to review this evening other than whether or not it complies with the coastal development permit findings. So, I'm gonna give you a brief overview of the application and what's being taken away and what will be put into place. And then the applicant is here with a presentation to kind of go through the design and the big picture with you. So, this is within the public facility zone. And in this image, the red buildings, these are, the ones on the top right are all modular buildings and the center one is also a modular building that will be taken down. Everything outlined in red will be demolished within the application. And so again, and the red was to be taken down. And they're going to be installing at the very top, oops, sorry. This building here will have classrooms. Then they're going to have a new building here that will have a wood shop, an art studio, and introducing to a locker space and also a gym room over to the right. So, with the, sorry. Having technical difficulties over here, touching buttons, not meaning to. So, one thing we do look at within the review of a coastal development permit is parking. And the existing parking on the site is a hundred and forty-eight spaces. With the new application, they've actually created two extra spaces, so it'll go up to one hundred and fifty. In reviewing the application, we found that there's no increase in the intensity of the use because with the modulars being taken away and the new buildings coming in, there's actually a decrease of twelve hundred and sixty-eight square feet of classroom space. And due to the locker rooms are considered in ancillary use because you don't hold a classroom in there and they're not increasing the occupancy of the site. So, that was the one item of review. And I thought I would leave the design discussion with the applicant within their presentation. So, with that, staff is recommending approval of the application for additional structures at New Brighton Middle School based on the findings and conditions of approval.
Before we, are there any questions from commissioners on the staff report? I did have a question, Katie, about, and I know we don't have the usual jurisdiction of this project, but do we have the ability to attach some conditions or findings about the process of construction? Usually, we, you know, have some conditions to help mitigate the noise, the times of construction.
We can, and I noticed in a previous application at this site, we limited the hours Monday through Friday, and I want to say eight AM to five PM. So, we could talk to the applicant about.
So, we do have the ability to...
You do have the ability.
Make those requests, thank you for that. And before I ask the applicant to come up, I guess in full disclosure, I have a daughter that's graduating from New Brighton Middle School tomorrow. And so, but since she's leaving and will not reap the benefits of this new construction, I don't feel that I have a conflict. But I did want to disclose, you know, my relationship to this project. With that, I'll invite the applicant to come up and tell us more about it.
So, my name is Andrew Fullerton. I work for Matty Group Architects in Santa Cruz, in the Sashmell. We work for the district. And the impetus for this project is basically, there was a measure passed in the November ballot in two thousand and sixteen, Measure C, to remove old portables, rundown classrooms, and prepare new classrooms for the, for the students incoming in the two thousand and nineteen year. And that's what we are attempting to do. It's a very tight schedule and, as you'll understand, kids only have the summer off and, and so the construction is gonna take place starting fairly quickly here. I think also some groundbreaking has already taken place through summer two thousand and nineteen. So, my, my presentation is gonna be fairly similar to Katie's. This is aerial view of New Brighton School as it stands right now. The areas in yellow are portables that are going to be removed from scope. They're gonna be demoed. Some of these portables were installed prior to nineteen eighty. And generally, they have a thirty to forty-year lifespan, if you're really pushing it. And, and we kind of are here. So, it's a great upgrade for the students to get into new permanent classrooms that can last a longer lifetime and be a generally better teaching environment. Also involved, as well as classrooms, are some facilities that the school just needs to run its programs. They're currently running the physical education department out of two old portables. That's the little yellow ones right beside the large gym on your right-hand side of your picture. Those will be replaced with a state-of-the-art locker room. We're also including a mat room for weights, that sort of thing, and a dance room as well. And that space can be opened up for large groups, that sort of thing. In addition, the yellow building to the right-hand side is a group of four classrooms. That's being removed. Those are old portables that were installed in part of almost the original school, the second iteration of the school in nineteen seventy-two. And those have outlived their use. They'll be replaced with a state-of-the-art art shop and also a wood shop with a, with a general ed classroom in between. And then, this was the master plan for the site, which was developed with the district, which shows kind of a future layout of the campus, where we feel and the district feels that it could progress to in the future. And this is a layout of what will be the new zero wing, is what the, is the classrooms towards the east side of the campus. Six classrooms and restrooms, fairly standard, all with upgraded technology and good teaching spaces. And then, these are the floor plans for the other two buildings. On the left-hand side, there's the locker room, two locker rooms, and the dance and mat room towards the south of them. And on the right-hand side, you've got the art studio at the top, the general ed classroom in the middle, and the wood shop on the bottom. And there's some three-D renderings of those spaces. The top picture there is the locker room and dance and mat studio. Bottom left is the view from Monterey Avenue towards the new classroom buildings. And the bottom right picture is showing the three classroom cluster with the art and wood shop. And you have any questions?
No. I had one question. You heard me ask the question about, you know, if we had the ability to, you know, impose certain conditions just to protect the neighbors. I mean, it's about, you know, the hours of operation, how early in the morning you can start, and measures to mitigate, you know, like dust and things that go with particulates that go in the air. Does the applicant have any issue with those or?
We have had a couple of notifications from neighbors that have kind of spoken with our foreman on site. And, and those have been taken care of by the contractors. If there are any others, we'll endeavor to meet those. I don't have any recollection of, of any complaints about noise. It was mainly about dust on someone's birthday. I think they're having a party or something.
Right, right, okay. So, it sounds like that, that could be feasible, but, I mean, yeah, you haven't started the construction yet, so, you know.
Some, some construction has started to take place. There's been some ground clearing and, and groundwork.
Okay. Well, thank you for your presentation. Are there, are there members of the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the, the microphone and I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion and action.
I would like to clarify that the construction hours under the code are from seven thirty AM to nine PM on weekdays and on weekends on Saturday between nine AM and four PM.
Yes, thank you for that, Katie. So, is, what are the commissioners' feelings on this project?
Well, I think it's a great project. It's nice to see these improvements happening up in New Brighton. Like you, I've had children who've gone through New Brighton. And it really could use some updating in some new classrooms. Those portables are pretty tired. So, I'm happy to see that they're spending the money this way to improve the school.
I'd agree with that. I like the design. I think it, it's a good fit for, for Capitola. I don't have any issues with adding the conditions about the construction. I think that's probably a good idea.
Yeah, thank you, Lynn.
I'm, I'm fine and, and in favor of staff recommendation to approve the project as it is.
Well, was there a second?
I guess I could make a motion to add the condition for our standard construction so that, that gets adhered to and the neighbors can know that and approve the project as otherwise drafted.
All right, thank you, there's a motion?
I'll second it.
And there's a second. With that, I'll, I'll call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, and thank you for bringing this project forward. It's been, the kids deserve it and, you know, and, and they will benefit greatly from it, so, thank you. Now, we'll move on to item five B. This is an application for an amendment to the master sign program at one oh three and one oh five Stockton Avenue. And we'll begin with a staff report.
Thank you, Chairman Story. So, tonight, the proposed amendment is to increase the maximum sign dimensions and allow an additional wall sign for the tenant at one oh five Stockton Avenue. Property is located at the intersection of Stockton Avenue, Riverview Avenue, and the Esplanade at the western entrance to the Central Village zoning district. A master sign program in general establishes the allowed materials, letter style, height, color, and illumination of signs for multi-tenant buildings in the city of Capitola. An MSP is approved by the planning commission with subsequent approvals administered by the community development director or his or her designee for signs which comply with the program. In two thousand and two, an MSP was approved for one oh three and one oh five Stockton Avenue. That's Armida and the space next door. That MSP allowed a wall sign located on the existing copper awnings in front of the business along Stockton Avenue, approximately twenty-seven inches tall by ten feet long, or eighteen and a half square feet, with capital letters being eighteen inches tall. It also allowed a wall sign located on the existing copper awning on the side of the business along the Riverview path, approximately twenty-four inches tall by eight feet long, or thirteen square feet, with capital letters being fifteen inches. The two current Armida wall signs, however, in the locations described are both twenty-four inches high and eight feet long, with capital letters less than twelve inches in height. The current application is the result of a code enforcement complaint. The applicant installed two signs at one oh five Stockton Avenue without a permit. The two exterior signs are thirty-two inches tall by ninety-six inches long, or twenty-one point three square feet. And the MSP does not allow a wall sign on the east elevation along Riverview Avenue, so the two signs are out of compliance with the master sign program. The applicant is proposing two changes to the master sign program. One, allow the tenant at one oh five Stockton Avenue to have a second sign on the wall adjacent to Riverview Avenue. And two, increase the maximum sign dimensions allowed under the master sign program to thirty-two inches tall by ninety-six inches wide, thereby allowing the signs that they placed. Staff supports the request for the second wall sign on the wall adjacent to Riverview Avenue because the applicant is on a corner parcel and allowing a second sign along Riverview Avenue is an allowance that currently exists for wall signs on corner lots in the Capitola municipal code. Under that code section, businesses which are located adjacent to two streets, or on a corner, shall be permitted one additional wall sign to face the second adjacent street if the business is not identified on a monument sign, as they are not identified here, so. Staff does not, however, support the request for larger sign dimensions. The proposed dimensions, which are illustrated by the non-conforming signs currently in place, are out of balance with the other tenant signs. Under the Capitola municipal code, a Central Village sign should relate to the surroundings in terms of size, shape, color, texture, and lighting so that they are complementary to the overall design of the building and are not in visual competition with other conforming signs in the area. The old master sign program is also a little difficult to read, so what we decided to do is to sort of lay out a better formatted overall master sign program as the amendment. So, the new MSP that we created involves several elements. One, each tenant is allowed to have two wall signs, or awning signs, as it may be in this case. At one oh three Stockton Avenue, signs may be located on the awnings on the south elevation along Stockton Avenue and the west elevation along SoCal Creek. At one oh five Stockton Avenue, signs may be located on the awning on the south elevation along Stockton Avenue and on the wall on the east elevation along Riverview Avenue. Signs may be up to eight feet wide and two feet high, which matches the existing Armida sign size. Signs may have up to two lines of text. Text in the first line shall be no greater than twelve inches in height and text in the second line of text shall be at least two inches smaller than the text in the first line. Signs shall relate to their surroundings in terms of shape, color, and textures so they are complementary to the overall design of the building and not in visual competition with other conforming signs in the area. Signs on the east and south elevation shall be attached to the top of the awnings, the way they're currently are at Armida. Signs on the west elevation shall be attached to the wall. Signs shall be externally illuminated and that illumination shall be down-directed and shielded to light, the signs only and not light trespass onto adjacent properties. And sign applications that comply with the master sign program shall be approved administratively by the community development director. So, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the master sign program as updated by staff and require the applicant to decrease the size of the existing signs at one oh five Stockton Avenue based on the conditions and findings for approval.
Thank you. Are there questions from commissioners on staff report? Yes.
So, with the new sign program, the existing signs that are there would come down and they would submit new signs to staff for approval, one on the front and one on the side that conformed to this. And staff will, as part of that process, look at the colors of the signs so that they fit with the building rather than the sort of stark white that's there right now, which in my opinion doesn't fit with the sort of character and color scheme of the building. So, you will look at colors too.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
First, the process here, it sounds like you drafted a master sign program for the applicant?
This is based on the existing master sign program with this language cleanup.
Okay. And they have bought into your new version of their master sign program or?
That's not what they requested because they were requesting dimensions that matched what they have currently in place that does not conform.
Sounds a little odd to me that the applicant proposes a master sign program and we prepare our own that master sign program for them, but I don't know, I'll see what other people think of that. The other question I had was, what about the vertical winery signs on the Armida side of the building?
Those would be non-conforming signs. We have not received any code enforcement complaints about those and that's generally our catalyst to take action, so.
Well, I mean, if we're gonna approve a new master sign program when there are violations existing, that doesn't sit well with me.
It would seem like both businesses would have to conform to the new sign program.
TJ?
Did you have something for you? A couple of questions. One, you know, these seem to be, I'm, I'm not one that's in favor of micromanaging, especially our staff, but these seemed, especially in the village, seemed to be very personal to other businesses in the community, in the area. And I hate to see the onus put on our community development director to pick the colors and the signs. So, is there any consideration of maybe making this a planning commission decision versus a community development director? Not, I, I prefer you guys handling the things you should handle, but these types of things, I remember we had a lot of discussion.
Do other signs in the village come to us? Is that how it works?
So, currently, this is the only master sign program I know of in the village. All signs typically come to the planning commission. And that was something in the zoning code update that we did make an administrative review for signs, but not in the village. So, all sign permits do come to the planning commission, so this is unique. We actually discovered the master sign program when the code violation came in and the applicant originally signed, brought in an application for a sign permit to come to the planning commission. But once we realized there's actually a master sign program here, we said, actually, you, you can't just bring in, you, you have to conform with this. And then he says, well, how do I get them to look at this sign? Because this is what I'd like them to consider. So, we, we then took these steps to amend, to clarify the master sign program. Cause this is what I'd like them to consider. So we, we then took these steps to amend, to clarify the master sign program and.
Well, that, that would be one concern is maybe, at least in the village, it comes to the planning commission. Uh, it, this is a somewhat sensitive discussion in, in the village. And we've denied, well, across the street, we denied the vertical, um, sign after they had put quite a bit of money into it. So, um, that'd be a, a concern I would have is maybe having this come to the planning commission.
That would be consistent.
Public, I, um, I'll save my comments.
Um, before we get to the public, I had a question about, um, the, on one oh three, the second sign along SoCal Creek. Um, how does that fit into our ordinance? I mean, it's not a, is that considered a corner?
It was just approved as part of the original master sign program in two thousand and two.
That was part of the original.
Yeah. And I, and I believe the discussion in the minutes had to do with visibility for people coming across, you know, Stockton Avenue, the bridge there into town. That was their rationale for allowing that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Um, with that, I'll, uh, open this item up to, to the public. If members of the public wish to address the planning commission on this item, please step forward. Seeing none, um, I'm gonna close the microphone up and, uh, I'll bring it back for a commission, uh, discussion and action.
Could I ask Commissioner Wells a question about, so were you trying to suggest that, uh, on the sign program that has been proposed by staff? That we keep the sign program and change the bottom line?
Exactly.
Or simply get rid of the sign program and say all signs in the village need to come to the planning commission?
You know, I actually, originally I thought just about changing the bottom so it's not administrative, but, um, since this is the only master sign plan we have for the village, I, I could go either way. I'm, I'm open to either one of those. I, what, is there a problem with doing that since we already have one master sign program?
You know, we haven't discussed it with the property owner at all, but, um.
Well, that would mean we would be treating this master sign program differently than we have all our other master sign programs. And is the fact, well, the unique, uh, feature is that it's in the village, gives us sufficient findings to treat this one differently?
So, um, I can bring up King's Plaza as an example. Under the King's Plaza master sign program, there was an administrative review of most of the signs. But the larger signs within the King's Plaza are required to come to planning commission. So we, we have set a precedence before of, um, you know, the, of coming to planning commission for certain signs. If you like the setup of having a balance between the two where they both have those front awnings, maybe keeping the master sign program as appropriate. So that people know what to, what to bring to the planning commission. But otherwise, if that's not a preference, you could, um.
Well, maybe just to move this along unless anyone has a real disagreement, maybe we just keep this master sign program, change the, the wording in the bottom that, um, it's not administrative. That it comes back for review to the planning commission and then we'll be wise in the future on.
Good question. Um, if we do that, where does that leave the signs that they have today? Because I, um, sort of agree with Commissioner Westman's comment that these signs, the white background really jumps out at me and says it's not consistent and it doesn't look good. If we approve the master sign program, it has to come to planning commission for approval, then where does that leave them with a sign today?
Um, I don't believe the applicant is here, but I would suggest possibly contin- continuing this to the next meeting so that they could bring forth a design. That possibly could be approved by the planning commission.
I'm totally uncomfortable with what's going on here, quite honestly. We've got, I, I'm not even sure what the application's for, but we've got the staff designing a master sign program for an applicant who's not present. Didn't show up at the hearing. And what I remember reading is they were saying that their signs they thought were similar to our metas. And they think they're maybe seeking permission to have their signs. There are other issues of, uh, non-conforming signs. I think we should continue this and try and restore some order to the application.
Kim, yeah, it may, it may be a formal way of, of doing that. It's just, um, maybe I need some clarif- clarification, but is to send this back to the building owner on exactly what we're looking for as far as. Some discussion on the sign review and that it needs to come back to the planning commission, um, with some understanding.
Generally, I don't think the idea of a master sign program in the central village, right in the, is really, given all the issues we've had about signs is really a good idea.
I don't think it's a good idea either. So we should continue it and.
But is, is there some way to communicate back to the applicant that the size increase that they're asking for is not being approved?
I, I, I think for, for me, uh, I would communicate to the applicant that their signs need to be similar to the two existing signs on Armida Winery. And that, um, they don't need to be the exact same color, but they need to be something that's, you know, consistent and fits with the building. You know, staff could communicate that with them.
I agree.
And then continue it for a clarified application?
We'll continue it till, give everybody an opportunity to chat.
And if we do continue it, uh, what's the status of the current signs?
We allow them to keep them up through this meeting, so I guess we could allow them to keep them up through the next one or not, depending on what you.
I don't have a problem keeping them up for, for their business.
I, I don't have a problem. It's only a week away and they need to have some signage.
Okay, as long as. Right, to the next meeting then. So do we have a motion to continue this item?
I will so move.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and, um, some staff, uh, took notes that they can be passed on to the applicant. Uh, with that, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Um, before you, tonight, we have the retail cannabis establishment ordinance. I'll let chairperson's story, actually, sorry.
Oh, no, I was gonna let you.
You were gonna let me run it?
You jumped in, go for it.
Jumped in. Um, so at the last meeting, I provided you with an overview of, um, the city council direction towards a possible adoption of retail cannabis sales in the regional commercial zone. And it'll be dependent on the voter approval. Um, so, quick overview, in nineteen ninety-six, uh, Prop two fifteen for medical marijuana passed. In twenty fourteen, the city banned all commercial and cultivation processes for cannabis in the city limits. In twenty sixteen, Prop sixty-four passed for medical mari- um, for recreational marijuana. And in twenty seventeen, the city, um, updated our ordinance regarding cannabis to further ban commercial marijuana uses except for within laboratories. And more recently, after, we, we're, the, the direction in twenty seventeen was, let's see what, what the state comes out with and then rethink this in the future. So more recently, w- the council has given us direction to move forward with a retail sales, um, cons- to be considered in the regional commercial district, but based on a community vote. So, um, this will, um, this amendment will only take place if the community votes for it. So the ordinances will include amendments to chapter nine point six one to allow cannabi- a, a retail cannabis license. This evening, we're reviewing an amendment to the zoning code to allow it within the regional commercial district. Um, we'll also adopt a new marijuana tax ordinance and that will be the item that goes out for vote. And amendments to the fee schedule for new applications that come in to be reviewed. And as I previously stated, the tax considerations will be on the twenty eighteen ballot measure to impose a local tax. This, because it will be on the t- um, ballot measure, we're under a tight deadline in getting this completed, so, um, all items have to be in by August. So here we are on June seventh and tonight is our night to consider dr- the draft ordinance for allowing cannabis within the regional commercial. The city council will review the first reading on June twenty-eighth, followed by a second reading on July twenty-sixth. And as you can see, there's one other meeting on August tenth in which they could consider if, if they want additional information or anything that could, it could be s- considered at that August tenth. It's the ballot deadline. Um, so the three parts to this are the zoning code, um, which is what we'll be reviewing this evening. And the retail component for a retail cannabis, uh, license, which will be under the purview of the police department, which will include best practices, um, background checks. And the, it'll, the owner will be responsible for the permit and the police will have the ability to revoke the permit or suspend it. And the tax initiative, so with a not to exceed amount of ten percent. And the council will have the ability to adjust that, um, that tax based on the market. So here you can see the, um, where the regional commercial zone is. It extends north from Capitola Road. It includes Claire Street, forty-first Avenue, and Auto Plaza Drive. I also included a regional map that shows the existing cannabis retail sales, um, that are included within the city of, um, Santa Cruz and the county of Santa Cruz. And the blue square is our small little section of the regional commercial zone within Capitola. Um, so now we'll jump into the zoning code changes. So within the land use table of the regional commercial, a new land use type for retail cannibal- cannabis establishments will be listed. It'll re- will require a conditional use permit with specific standards that will be outlined. Now we'll jump into those standards. Um, under the conditional use permit requirements, a cannabis retail license will be required and that's a selective process that goes through the chief of police. Um. Next, the, within the zoning regulations is the, there's a required distance from schools and churches. Under the state regulations, there's a minimum six hundred feet buffer required. Under our draft ordinance, we increased that to a thousand feet of, uh, uh, one, a one thousand foot path of travel between schools, churches, and the use. Also, we implemented a five hundred foot buffer between other cannabis retailers. Um, we're going to require independent access and specific sign standards. Um, in looking at sign standards, there's, I included three options. We actually, I went out with the chief of police and we did, we went around the county and looked at all, a couple of the newer establishments that have come in. And in talking with them, they didn't seem bothered by the regulations within the county. They're, they're really strict. I think it's up to twelve square feet. Um, you're allowed to have one, um, green cross and it's very limiting, but it didn't seem to be a problem when talking to some of the business owners, so. So within the first option, it would have to comply under a regular sign regulation. So business name and logo would be fine. Um, a maximum of fifty square feet is allowed in the regional commercial zone. Multiple signs would be allowed as long as it's under the fifty square feet and it complies with the sign standards and it would be an administrative approval.
And the pictures you're showing there are examples of?
They're just examples of what could be.
What could be, not what you found.
Yeah, but the, um, yeah, there really isn't much really large signage to show you from other neighboring jurisdictions, so what could be? So under our code, you could have a wall sign as well as a mon- well, I guess you could have either a wall sign or a monument sign. Um, but a wall sign could be up to fifty square feet if you're, if it has fifty linear feet of business, so.
But on ours, we're saying that they couldn't have like the marijuana leaf there. They couldn't say cannabis on it.
So under the v- option one, they could. So any, um, any language or, sorry. Any, um, language or images could reference cannabis under option one. It just, option one is that they just need to comply with this city's sign code. And any of these options can be amended if.
That one up there that says Starbucks?
Yeah.
Is that in Santa Cruz County?
No, I just found this on the internet, so, yeah. Um, option two is, this is a, actually, um, located at the end of forty-first on SoCal and it's called Treehouse. So within option two, you could have the business name. Um, there'd be no reference to cannabis through language, so this would comply, the treehouse. Um, you could have one logo or a green cross and it wouldn't be limited to, um, the logo or green cross that could reference cannabis. A maximum of twenty square feet and it would require a planning commission approval. Under option three, you could have the business name, um, fifteen square feet max. This is a little bit larger than what the county allows right now at twelve square feet. Illumination during operating hours, that's a standard I believe the county has. Planning commission approval would be required and this also states no reference to cannabis through symbols or language. So I've summarized all three of these into a table and, um, the next slide is just asking for, um, you to select the sign standards that you would prefer. And that staff recommends approval of, or a positive recommendation for cannabis retail establishments.
So I have one, one question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's no reference in the beginning to a distance from residence. And I know that most of our central commercial zone does not, isn't adjacent to any residential uses. But I seem to recall over on Auto Plaza that we are pretty close. So I'm just wondering if we shouldn't mention in the, in the code that it has to be a certain distance from residential use, as well as churches and schools.
So I'm gonna pull up a map. There's around Claire Street, so if, if, um, so the Brown's Ranch is close, that's also in the regional commercial. So that would require addition, you know, I don't think Brown's Ranch should be able to have a retail establishment if we had a buffer. And also on the, um, east side of forty-first Avenue, all of the properties where McDonald's is and Whole Foods, they also back up to residential. So by, if we were to include residential, it would, um, really further limit where cannabis retail sales could be.
So, um, since we're, we're talking about the sign portion of it, um, uh, uh, for me, you know, I, I would like to make certain that we include something. That, you know, signage is other things that they put on the building as well. Like if somebody decides to paint a big mural on the side of their building, uh, to advertise that it's a, you know, cannabis establishment or something like that. So I don't know exactly how to come up with that wording, but I would like to, you know, have something that they can't put other things on the building. Like murals or, um, artwork, um.
So maybe I can short circuit this. Uh, I mean, I'll have to see what, how the other commissioners feel. I, I'm not getting yet why we should treat this differently from any other sign as a design issue. Uh, because of the product. I mean, I would just apply whatever design, sign design rules we have to this, just like any other business.
So do we wanna hear from the public first? Cause I think they may have some concerns about that. I, we probably should open the public hearing before we go too much further.
Are there, are there any other questions from commissioners?
I'll wait till after we get public input ahead.
Was that the conclusion of?
That is the conclusion. So staff would like direction on signs and the ordinance overall, and then we suggest a positive recommendation to city council.
Uh, but I, I did have a question, Katie, about, um, these options, they, um, seems to be a distinction between the signage and the business art and the logo. Is the logo, is that included in the maximum size in option two and option three?
Yes.
It is, okay. So if they have a cross, uh, it's going to be either limited to the twenty square feet or the fifteen square feet.
And you can further, if you'd like to limit the size of the logo, we could take that a step further as well.
Okay, thank you. Uh, with that, I'll, um, open this item up to the public. If there's members of the public that would like to address the. If there's members of the public that would like to address the commission, um, on the proposed, uh, cannabis ordinance, please step up.
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Jenna Shankman. I am a member of Community Prevention Partners, which is a countywide multi-sector substance use disorder prevention coalition. Uh, one of my colleagues was here, uh, last time. Um, and, um, we, on this issue are thinking about, um, norms and just, um, impact on, on youth and, um, that is why, as it mentions in the report, um, other jurisdictions have looked at, um, treating some of the signs differently. And upon, uh, looking at the different options, it seems that, um, number three, um, is most in alignment in terms of limiting to the, only the one exterior sign. Um, not having any reference through symbols or language to cannabis, um, which we found to be really important, um, in terms of, um, uh, decreasing youth use and the sign shall not be directly illuminated except during operating hours and to keep it at the fifteen square feet, which is the same as Watsonville, but larger than unincorporated county. Um, however, um, I do know that in other jurisdictions, they also do allow, as you saw in the images, um, a logo as long as it is within certain size constraints, so that seems, um, reasonable as long as the, the logo doesn't have that, then that reference to, um, a cannabis image. Um, so just thinking about these, uh, sign restrictions to help limit kind of the proliferation and prominence that, um, of these, these images, um, which, um, just like other types of advertising can increase the, the age, uh, decrease the age, the young person, uh, starts to use cannabis or their perception of harm in just terms of normalizing it. So, uh, we do feel that having, um, some of these restrictions can just help, um, you know, set the, that tone. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Please step up.
Uh, good evening, council. My name is Gina Cole. I work for a nonprofit agency in Watsonville, Paharo Valley Prevention and Student Assistance. We are members of the, uh, Community Prevention Partners, um, as well. Uh, and we work, we've worked very closely with, um, CPP, Community Prevention Partners, on a number of different issues. We work on, with tobacco, um, we're very familiar with tobacco retail licensing. Um, we work with them with alcohol issues and as cannabis has emerged and the adult use, um, has passed and become, uh, a part of who we are as Californians now, we've, we've done a lot of work around that. We work very closely with industry folk. Um, the two, um, signs that you showed, Treehouse and Kind Peoples, are both folks that we've worked with for the last, how long Jenna, like four months, four, three years, two years? Yeah. Um, so industry folk here are, um, very much in tune with the, I, I guess with public health needs and with public health concerns, especially around youth, youth access and youth, um, influence. Um, we do a prevention program and part of our, uh, part of our work as, at, uh, PVPSA is prevention work in the schools, um, in the Paharo Valley Unified School District. And we hear all the time, especially at the turn, at the, in January, the kids were like, dude, it's illegal now. And we're like, dude, twenty-one. So there is, there are a lot of myths and misconceptions, especially with youth, that they could walk right into a, uh, a, a dispensary, they could walk right into a shop and get what they need, they not realizing that they must be twenty-one. Um, youth are very, very influenced by what they see. And I, I wanna just point out, and I'm, I was meant to run by the office, I've got this collection of Good Times, um, newspapers from about the last, I don't know, about six months. And it's interesting to see, we actually wrote a letter, some of the early advertising in January, um, some of the providers were actually showing marijuana leaves in their half, their full page ad in the Good Times. And we actually wrote a letter to the Good Times that wasn't published, but we noticed that after that letter, you know, stating this is a little bit over the top, most of their advertising has been toned down. They will have gone to the green cross. One of them has gone to, instead of a marijuana leaf, it's a, um, a fi- it's, it's surfboards. It's green surfboards. It looks still kind of like a marijuana leaf, but it's, it's not, so it's not as blatant. Because we do know that youth are influenced by, by that kind of advertising and so that's kind of our concern. We do recommend that you go with the sign three option, um, to really, not necessar- people know. People already know what it is. They know what it's there for and I, it's, again, youth influence and, um, social norming. We need to really be concerned about that. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Andrea Solano. I'm the project director for the Tobacco Education Program at the Health Department. I'm here with a couple of colleagues in tobacco prevention. We work very closely with Community Prevention Partners to ensure consistency on, um, some of the, the policy work that we're doing. Um, and related to alcohol, like Gina mentioned, tobacco and now cannabis. So you may or may not be aware of this, but recently we've seen an explosion in popularity among flavored tobacco products, um, particularly in electronic flavored products like e-sigs, vapes and Juul. And these all come in a variety of fruit and candy flavored flavors. They come in colorful and child-friendly packages. Um, recent studies sh- tell us that these are very popular among young people. In fact, over eighty percent of, of young people who ever used tobacco started with a flavored product. So public health officials and policymakers across the state are working really hard to re- to reduce youth exposure to these products through sales and advertising restrictions. Just this past Tuesday in San Francisco, you may be aware, they, they, they passed a complete ban on the sale of flavored products. It's the strictest ban in the nation. So, and the reason for that is because research tells us that advertising, signage, the exposure that we have in marketing has an impact on our choi- on our choices, our consumer choices. And exposure to tobacco marketing in stores is proven to increase tobacco experimentation among youths, youth and their use, overall youth use. And it's more, in fact, it's more powerful than peer pressure and even family smoking rates. So I just wanted to share some of that information, what we know in tobacco and how we've shaped some of the tobacco policies and what's, what's been effective in decreasing youth rates with traditional cigarette products and now what we're doing with the new, uh, electronic products. And so we thank you for carefully considering the development of this policy and, um, taking in consideration uh, how this may impact youth use. Thank you.
Thank you. See anyone else that would like to speak to the commission on this item? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the microphone and I'll bring the matter, uh, back to the commission for discussion and action.
Maybe I'll jump in. I'll jump in here first. First, thank you very much for coming and sharing, uh, your, um, knowledge and insight from the areas you work. And I, I think it's something we have to consider. I mean, I, I was born in Santa Cruz. I was raised in Mayberry RFT, RFT, but I, I'm not that naive, really. Um, but I'm not a big proponent of this whole, this whole concept. I understand that I'm not a city council member either and it's their choice. But I think when we look at what we, what we are here to discuss, uh, this area of zoning, I don't see how it even fits in there. I, if you look at, we're gonna discuss the Capitola Mall tonight. We've had long plans with our general plan about the Capitola Mall area, this, uh, commercial, uh, regional commercial area, about having housing around it. I talked with residents who live behind the Trader Joe's area, not happy about this, didn't know about it, not happy about, um, these products being sold in their neighborhood. They already have a huge impact of people as a thoroughfare going, um, from that west side into the mall area. Homeless, other people walking through foot traffic. They think that will be a large impact. If you look on the, uh, east side of Forty First Avenue, you have the Mobile Home Park and other homes back there behind the auto retail. I, personally, I don't see how it fits in, but I, I've done a little bit of, of research on this. One, we have, uh, for those who prefer to, uh, to use this, uh, material, uh, Katie put up a screen with a number of areas already where it's available for people to purchase. Uh, we're one point seven square miles. I don't know if we need to put one, two, three or four in, in the city of Capitola myself. But if you look at what's happening, we're fortunate because we have some people that stepped out before us, uh, Colorado and Washington. And, uh, and they're already seeing some, some large concerns. Colorado Springs, twenty-three percent homeless increase since they, uh, put this, uh, their, uh, marijuana, uh, in, recreational marijuana available. One thing that the, um, sheriff has noticed in both Washington and Colorado is they can't keep up with the black market supply of this. And so with the tax that the cities are putting on it, um, it actually is forced, uh, or made, uh, the black market even, um, a larger area of concern because, um, they don't have to pay the taxes and stuff, so. Uh, I talked with our police chief, um, he shared the concerns of what's happening in Colorado and Washington. Um, biggest concern for our chief and, and for me and I think for these ladies coming here tonight is our youth. And, um, you know, it's interesting, I, I spent my career in public safety. And by the way, the Green Cross has been hijacked because that was the National Safety Council that I grew up with, so, uh, they hijacked the Green Cross. But I had three, uh, medical marijuana, um, dispensaries in my district. I've been to stabbing, shootings, not on, uh, you know, uh, basis, maybe a couple of times a year, on a routine basis. Had the family of one of the dispensaries, uh, kidnapped and held ransom. I just, for me, I don't think the zoning, uh, should be in, in Capitola and, uh, I'm not in favor of it, but I know I'm the minority probably, so if it comes down to it, I think for me, uh, the only thing I could live with is option three.
All right, thank you, TJ.
So I have a question for this. So it's my understanding that, um, if we don't adopt some kind of ordinance like this, then, um, there's really no prohibition to someone coming and opening up a, you know, retail marijuana store in the regional commercial shopping center, anywhere.
There, right now it is prohibited, so.
But that's because of a moratorium that we have.
No, in our, um, chapter nine point six one, retail sales are prohibited in Capitola. So this, the steps we're taking here would be to allow retail sales within chapter nine point six one and amend the zoning code, none of which would take effect unless it was voted in by the Capitola voters. So, right now it is prohibited.
So it might really be the voters that will have a chance to give it a thumbs up or thumbs down in Capitola.
So when this goes to city council, it will be, it, it will come with the retail sales ordinance, which, um, has all the standards for how many would be allowed within the regional commercial. Um, what the, for the retail, so for the license that will be approved by the chief of police, that's a separate, that's an amendment to chapter nine point six one. Under the zoning purview is, is just the regional commercial. So tonight we would talk about where they could be located within the regional commercial and appropriate signs. But when it gets to city council, they'll be looking at the license and what is required for a retail, um, sales, uh, retail cannabis license. And that will have all the more strict regulations of, um, making sure that all best practices are followed, that there's background checks, that the correct safety measures and cameras are in place within an establishment, um.
I just have one more question.
Mm-hmm.
We, we're talking about, you know, and the information that you gave us, uh, limiting them to, uh, five hundred feet from each other.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have any estimate or idea about how many could go into the regional commercial district if we use that standard?
So the area of, um, Forty First Avenue from Capitola Road to Route One or to the city boundary is, I think, a little bit over two thousand s- linear feet. So in, in that instance, if you were to put one at Bank of America and one every five hundred feet, you could possibly get four in along Forty First Avenue. But that's not including, like Brown's Ranch could possibly have one. Um, the building at Auto Plaza Drive where you come in the old Kia building, so there's, and across the street. So I, I would say you could at least get probably seven or eight along the corridor. And I could map it to, to get a better estimate, but.
But one of.
But I, the council had talked about one to three in their initial discussions.
Thank you.
Yep.
And if, uh, are there questions or comments on this item? Lynn, do you wanna weigh in?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna weigh in on this one because I have sort of looked at both sides of it. The thing that makes it difficult for me is the, the recreational part of it because I think that being able to have access to medical cannabis has become more and more of an, of an acceptable thing and I, I think that that's a good thing. Um, I too had a lot of several residents that, um, indicated concern over having retail sales of marijuana close to their house um, for the reasons of, um, I don't know if there are regulations like there are with cigarettes. You can't be within a certain, you know, distance of a, of a business and be smoking cigarettes. Now that it's legal for adults to smoke marijuana, that was a concern that I heard from them. So if the ballot measure gets approved by the majority of the people in the area, then in my mind, it, it's a product like other products. And I think that people have a right to have, um, the name of their business on their sign and that it get treated the same way. But at the same time, we've learned from cigarettes that the, the, the camel man attracts kids. And so having the right to design a logo could wind up putting our youth in, in harms way the same way cigarettes did and look how long it's taken us to get the handle on that one. So I understand, um, Commissioner Newman's position that we shouldn't treat this any differently. But at the same time, I'm much more leaning towards option three and limiting it or option two with a green cross and not a logo and no additional artwork on the building, the sign, um, 'cause you do, you, you go to Santa Cruz and you see T-shirt print shops that have these great big murals that have been painted, um, that give them, uh, a different kind of presence um, that could be very attractive to our youth. And so I don't wanna get into designing people's logos. The only way it seems to me to prevent that from happening would be to limit it to a green cross and the name of the business, which isn't exactly one of your choices up there, so those are my comments.
Thank you. I'll go, I'll go one, one more round just briefly. It's all very interesting discussion, but I'm not seeing a lot of traditional planning commission issues here. I think there are issues for the city council, issues for the voters, uh, general policy, society policy issues. But from a planning standpoint, I'm having trouble seeing, uh, where we really fit in here. So I'm, I'm inclined to apply rule, the same rules as we apply to any other business in terms of design and signage and facade and et cetera, which are the things that we traditionally deal with.
Well, I think that the whole signage question is a typical, you know, sort of planning role that, um, uh, we have. And, uh, for me, I would go along with option three with the idea that there would be no additional artwork allowed on the building, um. And then, um, as, uh, our community development director said, it's the council who's gonna deal with the other issues and, and, and the police department. So, um, my. So, um, must.
Well, I just wanted to tell you that, uh, I support option three as well.
So I would make a motion that, 'cause that we go along with option three with no additional artwork.
And because, uh, could I ask a question about, um, we had talked about this being in proximity of residences. You know, part of the standards was that it wouldn't, uh, require a thousand-foot, um, buffer between the, um, dispensary and, um, any, uh, schools or churches? Could that include any residents?
Um, so a thousand feet from any residence would extremely limit where these could take place. I, I was gonna bring up that we do have a standard for drive-throughs now that is a hundred-foot buffer from a, any residence. So it would make it that, you know, Brown's, r- Brown Ranch could not have them. Um, the buildings such as, that are set back on the east side of Forty First could not have them. But it would, I think a thousand-foot buffer may be too broad.
Too broad, okay. But if, um, well, I would encourage the city council to look at maybe some buffer, um, as it relates to residents as well. And I, I agree, you know, this is a bigger, the bigger issue is for the city council to handle. Uh, but I think it is one of our purview to give guidance and our opportunity to talk about the signage. And just in short, I think it's important, I mean, this is a huge social change and I think it's important to tread lightly. I mean, this is still a federal scheduled to one substance. Um, and I think those are the reasons why we want to be cautious and maybe protective of, you know, of, you know, not only children, but other people in the society who maybe need some time to adjust to this. And let's see what the impacts are, and if we're gonna do that, let's, let's, I mean, let's do it with some discretion. And I think that that's the reason why I see Ed, uh, about, um, having different standards for this product as opposed to any other products. And who knows, over time, maybe all the issues will be worked out, uh, and we can be more free about it, but, um, yes.
Before we go forward with the motion, can I ask the motion maker one, just, um, possible for a friendly amendment? Um, the green cross is a standardized symbol that's going to be coming more and more. Capitola is an international destination. So one of the things that I've learned in my travels is when you're looking for someplace, having that, uh, simple symbol may help people identify location. So I, I'm just asking if option three, with the addition of a green cross, would meet with your.
That would be fine with me.
Then I could second the motion that you made with that friendly amendment.
Okay, and, and does the motion include having, um, the buffer, at least a hundred-foot, a hundred-foot buffer for residents?
So I'd like clarity if you'd like to encourage that, if you'd like me to bring the message that you'd like it encouraged, or would you like a one hundred-foot buffer?
I, I thought that we wanted to do, uh, send the message to the council that we thought they should.
Right, yes.
Encourage having a hundred-foot buffer for mention.
Okay. So option three plus the green cross, I could second that motion.
Okay, you know, the discussion on the motion, there's a motion and a second. So why don't we, um, have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Newman?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
No.
Commissioner Westman?
Yes.
Chairperson Story.
Aye, the motion passes three to two.
Next note will bring us to item five D. And this is a, a design permit application to remodel, uh, the Sears building, uh, at the Capitola Mall and to convert the space into three separate tenant spaces, um, with updated exterior facades. The retails proposed are Sears, TJ Maxx, uh, slash Home Goods, um, and, um, Petco. So we'll begin with a staff report, please.
Thank you, Chairman Story and Commissioners. So as just stated, the application before you this evening is for a master sign program and a design permit, um, for the Sears property at forty fifteen Capitola Road. It also includes, uh, a phase two with development pads, one along Forty First Avenue and one along Capitola Road. Um, in this image, you can see how the tenants will be re- divided within the proposal. So the Sears building will be divided to include a TJ Maxx and a Petco. And here you can see the two four thousand square foot pads that are proposed. These are, um, the phased approach to the pads. They, um, they're, they have not submitted design permits or, um, actual land uses tied to these pads, but they're conceptual and in discussions with the applicant, they would be willing to put some conditions upon having to stub out the pads and have applications in process in order to do the, um, the final, um, occupancy of the new tenant spaces. None of that has been completely worked out, so I don't really feel comfortable tying any conditions to it at this point. But in one meeting with them, there was discussions of, of, yes, they would be amenable to, um, within the phased approach, having conditions tied to getting into that second phase before, um, occupancy of the first phase. So a timeline was in the, um, staff report. I'm not going to go through every step of the timeline for you, but the important items are, back in December of twenty sixteen, the planning commission did do a conceptual review of this application, um, in which you gave them a lot of feedback of how you would like to see the, the plan revised for the future. One of the major changes that did come in is the original conceptual review did not include improving the Sears site, the Sears building itself. And now they've put together, um, facade finishes on the exterior of, of Sears. They've also updated the plans to include a couple bike lanes and, um, the phase two, um, paths are there and also improvements along the facades. We've gone through two series of incomplete letters and we've had a few meetings. Back in February of twenty eighth, of, February twenty eighth of this year, I sent out my second incomplete letter. There were some emails in between the time that the application was resubmitted, explaining that we're in the process of adopt, of adopting the new code that would pertain to this project. And that I would need more time. Unfortunately, in that letter, I did not deem it incomplete. So on May ninth of this year, very recently, the applicant's attorney, um, sent in a letter stating that they'd like the application deemed complete under the Permit Streamlining Act. So in review of that, um, the applicant is correct, the, uh, incomplete letter was not sent out within the thirty days. So therefore, we, um, accommodated and worked hard to get them on the agenda this evening. In the meantime, um, another important factor is that the environmental site assessment was provided to staff last December. Um, I sent that out for a second party review in which it came back stating that the, the work that was done was not for a full facility closure of the site. It was to remove one joy, uh, one of the joists at the time. And that permit no longer applied. And to move forward with a full facility closure, you have to go back to the county and have, um, co- and pull the proper permits for a facility closure. So I informed them of the, um, that they still needed to, uh, um, complete the ESA. So we're here tonight reviewing their application and, um, due to the Permit Streamlining Act. And there, there still is not compliance with the environmental review of this from the county, and I'll get into that in a little bit. So I'm gonna give you an overview of what they are proposing. Um, tenant B would be Petco, uh, eleven thousand square feet. Here's the exterior of the proposed Petco. You can see that elements of the existing mall are kept within this proposal. So the brick veneer in the corner stays and some of the stucco as it extends towards the, um, TJ Maxx. New elements are the entryway for the, the large entryway for the arrival. At Petco, also, um, new brick veneer along the base. And they've added some benches and also a plant trellis, I believe. It looks like a living wall. The details of that were not specifically called out in the plans, but as you can see, the greenery on the wall, I believe, is a trellis structure. Um, this is a two-dimensional or three-dimensional, uh, image of the Petco. So you can see how the new entryway, um, projects off the building. Um, and the signage extends above the existing, um, top of wall. The next is the TJ Maxx Home Goods. This is much larger in size at forty thousand square feet. Um, again, a, a large sense of arrival with the new entryway. Um, they're utilizing wood siding as finishes and stucco on the main entryway. Again, elements of the existing building will stay, the existing stucco will be repainted. They're carrying the brick veneer, the new brick veneer, uh, accent across the building on this facade. And again, the plant trellis idea, some new benches, um, they're going to tear out the existing planters and build new planters. Um, and then to the right of this will be the new Sears. So, and here's a three D image of TJ Maxx Home Goods. So again, this is, this entryway is li- is about double the size of the Petco entryway. So Sears, um, will remain on the east side of the building. And as you can see, one thing I meant to point out before is that the new tenants, tenants A and B will not be connected to the mall. There'll be no entryway to go from those new, new establishments to connect into the mall. Here you can see the mall connection and how you could get through the Sears, uh, to the mall. Um, the Sears update, um, the new facades are, it's more of a contemporary look and a nice improvement here with stucco being repainted, but introducing repetitive elements such as the brick veneer, the wood siding, metal lover, louvers, and, um, just different accents that are repeated and make a nice contemporary finish to the whole exterior. Again, um, the existing planters will be ripped out and replaced in certain areas and benches are incorporated in some of the planters. And this is the facade facing Forty First Avenue. Um, within the application, there was a master sign program. Um, the master sign program, under, under our new code, signs are limited to fifty square feet plus a twenty-five percent allowance by the planning commission. Of course, within a master sign program, you are allowed to go beyond those standards. So that's what this application is for, is to be able to go beyond those standards. The proposed master sign program for Sears includes a one hundred and eighty square foot east sign on the east side and two hundred and fifty-one square feet on the south. TJ Maxx's sign is two hundred square feet and the Petco is at seventy-five square feet. So those exceptions would be requested within their master sign program. If the planning commission were to approve the signs under the master sign program, I would request that, um, I would suggest that, similar to the previous application we looked at tonight, that it not be an administrative review if a new sign were to come in at this size. They should definitely always have the planning commission review, and that's consistent with what occurred at Kings Plaza. Is that the larger signs for the big box tenants would be reviewed by the planning commission. So first, we'll look at sustainability. Within a design permit, under the, this application is reviewed under the new code. And within a design permit, there's different criteria A through S. I'm only bringing up those criteria that we have found the application not to be in compliance with, rather than go through every item, every criteria. So within sustainability, as I mentioned, the applicant, um, had previously pulled permits to remove a joist within the Sears location. That was under a twenty fourteen and twenty sixteen environmental site an- analysis. The county acts as a contractor to the city. Within our municipal code, they are given the responsibilities of, of doing our environmental review, um, for this type of work for a facility closure. The county did not receive a full, a permit for a facility closure at Sears. When I spoke with the county, um, their understanding was that the new tenant may or may not be in automotive use in the future. So therefore, the permit that they issued to remove the one joist was, um, or hoist, sorry, was specifically under the assumption that this, this site could be utilized as an automotive site in the future. So, um, once I had the third party review done and then in talking with the county again, they said they would have to come back in for a full facility closure permit, knowing that they want this site to change to retail use. As of yesterday, it's my understanding that the county had not heard from the applicant. So at this point, um, it's my understanding, unless they met with them today, that no action had been taken on, uh, cleaning up the current outstanding issue with a facility closure permit. And in order for us, when, when, uh, giving out the, um, when going through the steps, prior to going through SEQA, we need the ESAs to be complete, the environmental site assessments, to understand what type of impacts are on the site and whether or not, um, we could do a negative deck for this project, a mitigated negative deck or an exception. So that part, the SEQA review, has been on hold until the full ESA site assessments are completed. So without that, I was not able to move forward with SEQA review. Um, drainage is another, um, item that is not yet in co- that is not in compliance with, under the current proposal. So within the municipal code section three point one six, the city is required, excuse me for one moment. The city is required to make sure that all s- all projects for development are in compliance with stormwater regulations of the state. So, um, in doing the review, we, this was, stormwater was sent out to a third party. And with the information provided, the third party is not, was not able to make findings that stormwater is in compliance with the local, um, municipal code section three thirteen point one six, which ties back to the state regulations. So those two, um, items are technical requirements. So within planning review, there are qu- quantitative technical requirements and qualitative. Just wanna highlight to you for staff, at this point with these two, um, quantitative technical requirements, we could not write up findings in support of approval of this project due to outstanding environmental issues. So moving forward, we'll go into more of the qualitative. Um, so under design permit criteria for, um, one is for pedestrian environment and that the primary entrances should be oriented towards invisible to the street in support of an active realm and an inviting pedestrian environment. This standard, when looking at a mall, there's, the pedestrian environment also, it, a mall isn't, each property within a mall isn't just a property that stands alone and has no connection to the neighboring buildings. One of the main functions of a mall is that you can move from a tenant's space into the mall and it has a, um, relationship, uh, in which pedestrians can move through to the other properties. Within this application, the two new tenant's space lack any internal connectivity to the Sears w- and to the, further to the mall. Um, under the design permit criteria, there's four applicable standards, one for architectural style, one for articulation and visual interest, materials and signs. Since the application has come back in, the articulation and visual interest, they've done a lot of work there in terms of making the buildings more interesting, adding those living walls. The materials on the, um, Sears building are well-coordinated. Uh, the signs within the Sears building kind of fit in with the Sears building. But as I stated prior, um, the Petco and TJ Maxx signs, it seems like the design is more about the signs than the architecture. But the Sears building was r- um, finished with a contemporary style. Um, there's great articulation and visual interest as you move around the building, um, and re- Um, and re- repeating the materials and really creating a sense of a, a, an architectural style overall. When we look at the TJ Maxx and the Petco, um, the architectural style to get into that is, it should be compatible with the surrounding and built natural environment. Um, i- it is an authentic implementation of appropriate established architectural styles and reflective of Capitola's coastal village character. I think this is the one standard that this really lacks. Um, the architectural style is really undefined. It's more of um new, you know, really pronounced entryways to these two structures. But the, you could not define what the architectural style is to this. Um, I don't, or I'm able, unable to, other than it creates a great background for very large signs. Um, they've kept the same, you know, the old mall facades of the brick. Uh, they're gonna repaint the stucco, but really it doesn't create a true architectural style. I think Sears kind of w- did take, should get, um, did define a new architectural style. So moving on to design, we'll now talk about parking and access. So the parking areas should be located and designed to minimize visual impacts and maintain Capitola's distinctive neighborhoods and pedestrian friendly environment. Safe and convenient connections are provided for pedestrians and bicyclists. So within uh one um connection that currently is, is not well done and in, we talked about this, I think, at the conceptual review process, but there's a lack of connectivity that is safe for pedestrians between the Sears and the Target. So during that conceptual meeting, it was suggested to improve that connection. That was not included in this application. Um, what was included were two new bicycle um lanes, one off of Fortieth Avenue and one on Thirty Eighth Avenue to bring bicycles safely to the Capitola Mall. In the review of this application by the Public Works Director and looking at our bike paths and um some of the RTC language for the future build out of the mall, the um Public Works Director would like to see bicycle paths on both sides of each of the major um entrances to the mall as well as a path that's connected going around the mall. Is that would be consistent with the general plan and um, and, and Capitola's goals for the future, so. Open space in public places, um, within non-residential development to provide semi-public outdoor spaces such as plazas and courtyards, which helps support pedestrian activity within an engage, i- an active and engaging public realm. Um, and then we also have land use policy tied to the general plan. Just talking about creating great place and um through your open spaces and public places. So what the applicant has done here, um, this is the facade along Petco. On the top, you can see the image of the facade and below it is actually the improvements along the sidewalk. So the light green area is the areas of new planters. Um, you can see there are three new benches proposed along this facade. And an image of the wooden benches are on the bottom right. And the new uh, the sidewalks will be improved with colored concrete and pavers. This is um as you move closer to Sears to the east. So again, colored concrete and pavers are proposed, pavers of the entryways. Um, new planters, the existing planter where the corner tucks in is going to be replaced with a new planter. And this is the front of the Sears building facing Forty First Avenue. So again, new planters, pavers and colored concrete along the sidewalk. Um, so with that, I've gone through the, the design elements of this and the design standards. We've um talked about the technical um standards of this permit. Also during the review back um with the conceptual review and I included it in the staff report, there are many um references to the Capitola Mall within the general plan. And really, it focuses on making a place that, uh, an experience for people in the future through place making and the public realm. So in an, in approving a design permit, there is a requirement that you make findings that um a design permit is in line with all the criteria of the design permit as well as the municipal code, which um we've got technical violations with our envi- with environmental health and with stormwater, um, and making findings that it's also in compliance with the general plan. So staff is recommending that the planning commission deny the design permit application and the master sign program based on the fact that we cannot make findings for the design permit criteria. It's, and the technicality is that it's not in compliance with the environmental health, um, chapter two point two oh. And it is also not in compliance with our stormwater regulations contained in chapter thirteen sixteen. So, thank you. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Katie. Other questions from commissioners on the staff report?
I have one quick question.
Yeah.
Um, I went back and I looked at the, the concept review that we did. And one of the uh points that you brought up then was the width of the sidewalk and how it was, it was a nice wide pathway. Um, I didn't see a lot of detail on the planters and how big they are, but were you able to get a kind of an assessment that the, the sidewalk is wide enough in those places to accommodate the planters that they're suggesting and still be a wide pedestrian friendly sidewalk?
You know, you know, I did notice that some of the planners um do tend to come out f- quite a ways in areas. And I, I don't know the exact measurements in the, in those areas and what the width is. So maybe we could ask the applicant this evening for what those measurements are.
I was just noticing that in, in your presentation, that some of the benches are turned, which makes me think they come out farther than I had previously. Thank you.
Got a question.
Yeah, Justin.
So on the master sign program, this is a, a master sign program just for this property.
Correct.
And is there a master sign program for the rest of the mall?
There is for the directional um signs through the mall. There is a program for that.
As I recall, a few years ago, we approved monument signs for the mall. And I think it might have included Sears on the monument signs.
Correct.
So this is gonna impa- if we approved this and the city council approved it, it would impact that uh decision in some way, I think.
Uh, so th- for the mall, I, I think it is just the, the monument signs along the mall. So I, I think that would still be in place, but as a separate master permit for multiple mall tenants.
I brought that up at the time. Whose master permit is that? Uh, it's all the properties, including this one, which doesn't. So I'm not sure where that leaves us, but this is just for um the wall signs for this building.
Correct.
Yeah, and we don't know if it's the same or different from the requirements for the other buildings in the mall.
Yes, I don't know if it's um the sa- there, there are no, there's not one master sign program for the exterior buildings. Like Target has had their own permits issued. I know when uh one of the rest, two of the restaurants that recently came in had their own signs approved. So there is not a overriding master sign program.
Did we uh analyze how this proposed master sign program relates to the signs that other properties in the mall have had approved?
You know, it's similar in size. I, I did um, I looked at the recent master sign program that was approved at Kings Plaza. And I believe one of those signs goes up to a hundred and seventy square feet that was approved um for the grocery store. So it, there are quite a few larger signs. I wanna say the Orchard Supply went up to a hundred and twenty square feet, but I did not include that analysis in the report. I'd be happy to do so in the future. Thank you.
And I think Ultra, wasn't Ultra one that we, we passed? It had its sign is larger than, when Ultra came in as an independent.
Right.
Change, I think that was one that was larger.
Any other questions from commissioners? Um, Katie, I had a question about at least the techno to um deficiencies. Um, could those be handled through a conditional um approval of the project?
Um, at this point, stormwater, I believe, could.
Mm-hmm.
Because stormwater, but they wouldn't be able to move forward with a building permit without stormwater.
Right.
The unknown environmental impacts tied to um the, the facility closure, really, I, I wouldn't feel confident about attaching any CEQA related findings that there's no environmental impacts tied to this property um through a condition without having no, having the full site analysis and um knowing that they've come into compliance with a facility closure.
Right. Thank you. Um, with that, I'll open it up to um the applicant and of course, anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to the commission on this item. Yes.
Thank you, and good evening commissioners. I wanna first thank um uh the planning staff, Katie. Uh, also wanna thanks- thank the city attorney for moving this matter forward. As you know, we've been at this for some time. We originally started this in April of two thousand and sixteen and we've been working in earnest for the last two years uh to try to refine the application, to try to answer staff questions. Obviously, based on the staff recommendation, uh, it's at least staff's view that we're still not there. Uh, we do think we've made a lot of progress uh on this, on this project. I think the one item that I'd like to open with, um, and by the way, I'll mention that the full team is here tonight. Uh, we're here to answer your questions. We're here to uh be helpful and informative to try to refine this and make sure that everybody's comfortable as we move forward. Um, please.
Sorry to interrupt, but could you just state your name for the record?
Yes, uh, my apologies. Yes, my name is David Waite and I am land use counsel for the applicant.
Right, thank you, Dave.
For Saritich. Thank you. Um, I think the one item that um is a little bit of the elephant in the room, so to speak, uh, because it's sort of has come up at every meeting we've had on this project, which is the relationship to this project to a larger mall redevelopment plan. The city has a lot invested in a long-term plan, a long-term vision for the redevelopment of the Capitola Mall. And suffice it to say that the city's own plans, uh, its general plan, its uh vision plan for the Capitola Mall, all recognize very specifically the incremental nature of how these projects have to proceed. And at least by one indication, this is a fairly straightforward application. We're demising the Sears property into three tenant spaces and we're putting new signage up for, for the new tenants. Uh, and that's, and that signage, as you know, for a lot of retailers is, is somewhat formulaic. There's not a lot of flexibility, so we're, we're kind of trying to work with that format for these tenants. But the point is that it's a fairly straightforward application from the standpoint of what we're doing. We're not, we're not changing the footprint. We're not building new buildings. Uh, we're not adding, uh, you know, major amounts of new infrastructure. These are demising the existing space so that we can put these properties into productive use. It will generate rent. It will generate sales tax revenue for the city. Uh, all of that is a good thing for everybody. So fairly straightforward application. But again, I think the, the, the elephant in the room is, you know, how does this relate to the long-term vision, the long-term plan with respect to the development of the Capitola Mall or the redevelopment of the Capitola Mall? And the answer is that when you sort of hoist that on the petard of, of Saritich to say, how does this plan relate to and how will it be consistent over time with the long-term redevelopment plan? The answer is, we don't know because there is no plan. And the problem is for us, we, when we approach Maryland Geyer and we say, we're moving forward, we've gotta put our property into economic use, we have to make an economic return on this asset. We can't anticipate their timing. We can't anticipate what they might do. Now, let me say this, we absolutely need to cooperate with them on whatever the long-term plan is. There are REAs in place, as you know, from the staff report. We went to Maryland Geyer, we got their approval. They have consented to every element of this plan, both from a design and a facade standpoint. They have no issue with it. In fact, they support it. So probably the best evidence in terms of that long-term consistency and that long-term vision is Maryland Geyer's conclusion that nothing that we are doing is inconsistent with what they may wanna do long-term. So I wanna just state that as sort of a, an outset issue because I know that the planning commission, the city council, your city manager is thinking long-term about this project. You're thinking of, you know, about what does a new retail mall look like? We're in a major sort of shift in terms of retail, uh, the retail environment in this country. How does this project relate to that? How will, how will we potentially lock ourselves in from doing something that we may wanna do later? And the answer is you won't. The answer is you still maintain flexibility. And I think it's important to quote, and I hate quoting in front of commissioners, but I'm gonna just do it because I think it's important because it really lends support for what we're saying. The uh, the general plan policies uh really do encourage a phased approach to redevelopment of the mall. And that's in your land use plan LU eight one uh in your policy plan. Also in the vision plan, the vision plan states that it's necessary to envision and permit short-term improvements that do not fully achieve the ultimate vision. And that again is in your vision plan. Specific policy one point nine, allow property owners to make modest improvements that will not conflict with the long-term vision for the property. Policy two point three, a phased approach to redevelopment of the mall. Uh, and again, this is all in your plan. And then even with your most recent zoning code update, which I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on, on the legal issue of whether we think this project should apply to that. Our view is that the old zoning code should apply because we were deemed complete before the, uh, the new code went into effect. That's our, our legal position, but I don't wanna dwell on that. But what I do wanna say is even under your new plan, your new plan specifically states that major redevelopment of the mall may require a rezone, plan development, specific plan, development agreement or similar process. We all know how much time that takes. It takes two years just to do a facade improvement and a demising. Think how much time it's gonna take with a, with a long-term plan with development agreement. So those take a lot of time. So I wanna just state that at the outset, that we don't believe that anything we are doing will in any manner compromise the city's long-term vision for this asset. You, you maintain that flexibility. These are multiple property ownerships. You've got Macy's, you've got the Coles, you've got Maryland Geyer, you've got Saritich and Sears. So you've got these multiple interests that are all aligned to make a successful mall. And we all have to work together over time, but that du- that shouldn't mean we should stop. Now, we have to keep these assets moving. We have to keep them productive. We have to keep economic returns coming off of them. Okay, so enough on that topic. Um, I wanna just talk briefly about the master sign program. Katie is correct, uh, we are applying for a master sign program. That allows us the flexibility to go beyond the hard limits of uh one linear foot, uh, excuse me, one square foot per one linear foot into your code and we're, we're requesting that. Katie acknowledged that our sign is in many respects consistent with other retails in terms of size and scale. I can have our architect talk about some of the more uh, uh, design elements that have been incorporated into the sign element. I wanna talk about the, the hazardous waste issue for a moment because we obviously, uh, the first time, by the way, we received the letter from the county was when it came in the staff report. We hadn't seen it previously, even though it was issued on, on the seventeenth. Um, but apparently that was issued at, at Katie's behest because she contacted them and said, what's up with, with site closure? A phase two environmental site assessment, which is in your packet, was completed for the evaluation of the contamination at the uh former Auto Bay facility. That phase two investigation included the first permit for the removal of the lifts. And then it also included a very extensive subsurface soil investigation for all the other lifts whi- which were subsequently removed. We got a closure letter from the county after that phase two was submitted to the county. Our assumption was, we're closed, we're done. We don't need to do anything further. Now, it appears, and again, we're investigating this, we're trying to figure out what the miscommunication was. It, it appears that the county is now saying that we needed a permit to apply for those subsequent closures. And we're gonna take a look at that. We're not saying we're, we don't have to get that permit. If we have to get that permit, we will get that permit. And we will get the site properly closed under the regulatory oversight of the county. We're committed to doing that. We have to do that. We have to do that for our tenant. We have to do that for a host of reasons. Um, but at least I think the, the, the commission needs to know that in terms of the timing, a fa- a very robust phase two analysis was done. Soil samples were taken of all of the, the beds from the, uh, from the lifts. And that result concluded that the only contamination issue was the original lift that was removed and that was remediated, fully remediated, and that's all documented and closed by the county. So we're gonna look at that issue. Um, on stormwater, I also wanna just simply state that, you know, I think, again, we're not making major improvements. We're not altering the infrastructure or the drainage on the site. I think the trigger there is because we're, we're, we're doing the pavers and that, that fact that we are touching the pavers is apparently triggering new BMPs with respect to stormwater management. That one, I think, as Katie acknowledges, if we have to condition the project on full compliance with BMPs, we are willing uh to move forward on that basis. I'm gonna now sit down and I wanna bring up other members from our team to answer specific questions on design, pedestrian access, walkability, uh, those sorts of issues because I think the architect and, and others on the team are the best suited to answer those questions. But obviously, if you have more questions, I'm here and would happy, happily answer those questions. So thank you.
Now, did, did you have questions for?
Um, yeah, if, if he's got a team that wants to speak, I can save them to the end of.
Okay, well, I, maybe if you go ahead and pose your questions, then they know who to send up and respond to.
Okay. Um, I have- I have five questions, they're pretty straightforward. The first one was, on the pads that are on the plan identified as phase-two, I couldn't, I'm not really good at reading construction plans, so some of these questions may be pretty elementary. But I didn't see sidewalk improvements from Capitola Road to the Sears building, and from 41st to the Sears building, and I don't know if they're included in there, and I just missed them, but that was one of my questions.
Just, we're going to answer that question, preambular answer. We're moving forward tonight with the demising and the facade improvements for the Sears building. As Katie alluded to, we're going to come back on those pads. This is going to be a later, a later phase. This is phase-two, but we're happy to answer your question.
Hi, my name's Craig Chin with ADC, I'm the architect, and I've got the flash drive that's got the whole package. Could I plug it in here and we can look at those exhibits?
Sure. No, and, and if you just want to say yes or, or no, that would be, at this point, simple enough for me.
Okay.
So are there sidewalk?
There is, yes. There's sidewalk improvements.
That come all the way in from the street to the building?
The one on Capitola does, the one on 41st does not.
Okay.
But we enhance that with outdoor patio seating, outdoor plaza, a nice little note on the corner that brings you into an existing path of travel that takes you into the mall property.
Okay. And obviously, it's, it's a second thing, but I was wondering if there's any kind of a target in your mind about phase-two? Is it, is it tied to some time after phase-one finishes, or is there any general?
Good evening, Blake Carroll with Cypress Equities, development manager for Saritich. So as far as what we had envisioned for phase-two, the way that it's drawn on the plans currently, it's basically for the pad improvement itself, to where, you know, we, we would basically install the, complete the site work along with the permit for the building construction, the building permit for the TI essentially, for both the, the Petco and TJ Maxx Home Goods. So we will be required to start that work and make the financial improvement into those pads, to where then, I mean, in the future, here in the coming months, not too long after we start design for, and construction documents for the TI, we'll come back in with full construction document plans and building elevations to get the ultimate design for phase-two to approved. So it, it doesn't include the full plans and scope for those pads right now, but, so we would be coming back in to get that finalized.
So you're looking at a matter of a year, two years?
Not even that long. I mean, we're, we're talking, you know, I mean, we would, it's, it's in our best interest to have that project, those pads, be a continuous project, to where we don't do the site work and then let it sit for a long period of time. It would be in our best interest to complete that site work and have it flow straight into vertical construction for the pads. So really, these pads were added as, to comply with the overall general plan at, at the request from staff and, and city. And, you know, we're happy to do it, you know, just trying to figure out the, obviously, the immediate goal to get the approval for the re-tenancy for the Sears box. We view this as a condition to be able to, to do that, and this was the first step of that phase-two.
That's a good clarification side of the question. So in, in front, the main, the front of the Sears building comes down, and there's an entrance into, off of Capitola Road, and you have one of your phase-two pads there. So I'm confused about whether the new sidewalk that's going in there with the bike lane, is that part of phase-two, or is that part of phase-one?
Phase-one.
Because the, the bike lane would be part of phase-one, which means you'd have to move the sidewalk.
There's, there's two bike lanes off of Capitola. The one to the, there's one on the, closer to the corner by the bank building, there's one further away from that. There's, so there's two coming in.
One off of 38th, and then the one next to B, B lane.
So those new sidewalks would go in as part of phase-one?
Sorry, yes, one would. So the one on 38th would be part of phase-one, the, the one on 40th is part of phase-two.
That would tie in with the site work that we would be doing for that pad.
Okay. One is phase-two and one is phase-one.
For the bike lane, but, but the sidewalk that doesn't exist, doesn't exist on 40th today. There is a sidewalk that goes in on 38th?
Right.
Correct.
Okay. Just.
So any side, okay, got it.
And if I might add, that's part of the pedestrian experience when you go in there, because right now, it's double lanes of parking, so you're actually backing in to what is currently 40th, 40th. So by adding the bike lane and adding the sidewalk, it's actually making it safer than what it would be if you just put a bike lane in there with the parking the way it stripes. So we've adjusted a lot of that area there to make it a lot more pedestrian-friendly. So when you're coming in off of Capitola, you get as close to the Sears building and close to the mall as you possibly can, without interfering on the greater side of the parking.
Right, and I guess my, my point in asking the question was, I thought that's what I was understanding, that that sidewalk, which is going to be a main, a major improvement in our pedestrian experience, isn't in phase-one, it's in phase-two, and there is enough room to put it in and the bike lane where you've, you've drawn it, and you guys have, have looked at that?
Yep.
In our conceptual review meeting, we talked a lot about the gathering places, and specifically that corner where there's currently a great big planter by the Sears building. And when I was looking through the packet, there was a reference to that planter, and it said to refer to A-13R for the planter dimensions and the landscaping detail, and there was no A-13R. So I'm wondering if you have any detail on what's going to happen in that corner? Did that get a lot of focus, or?
It, it did. So we actually have certain nodes going through the building all the way around, starting from the left corner where Petco is. We have a, our first node there with new planning, new, new benches, and then as you walk along, there's these new nodes every 150 feet, something like that, 100 feet. So you've got, as you're walking along, you can see where your next spot's going to be, whether you're going to park a bike there, or sit down, or there's going to be new enhanced landscaping. So we've really created that. So on that corner where we've enhanced it, we've added new paving, and if you look at sheet A-4.2, it shows kind of a diagram of that.
Okay.
And the idea was to create it where you're going to have bench-style seating, so as you're sitting there, waiting for people or joining other people, there's activities that you can sit there. Adding in a, a better shade tree, that provides better shade for the pedestrians as they're in that area.
Okay, so you're, you're talking about the area right along the, the front of the road?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
And then, and then past that, as you look through there, you can, you can see there's either enhanced paving, or there's new planters that are proposed, so there's always something else happening. And everything is, is designed to be at a pedestrian scale, so we don't have really contextual, or really highly textural elements really high up in the air. We have them lower, where people can see them and experience them. So the pavers, the wall, the, the wood that's on the side, the, the stone that's now on the side where you can touch it, all the planters are, are seatable, so you can sit there. So the whole idea is to create, you know, really a pedestrian-friendly environment as you go through, even though it's only three stores and three, three main tenants, as you're walking through there, you really get a different feeling as you're going through from the tenants' frontages to the void spaces, which are now enhanced with paving and planters and green screens. So there's always something happening. It's not big blank walls like there is now.
Okay, and it's low. And that leads right into the next question. The, the material, the, the green walls behind the benches, I couldn't find any reference to what those really were, and, and tonight I signed Katie's presentation that, that we think those are trellises. Can you, can you tell us what those are?
Yeah, so it's a, it's really meant to be a green screen, so it's going to be, if you've seen them, traditionally, they are a mesh of metal, that the, the grow, the, the type of plant material that grow and they move will go in between there and get forced to be in that area, and then we just, we just landscape and prune them to stay in that square area.
Okay.
So it's meant to grow through this, not a, not a vine that's going to crawl up a wall, it's actually in a cage, and the cage helps direct where it's going to go, so you don't have it coming up over the building and going sideways. It's really meant to be manicured and, and kept in a certain space.
Okay. I'm not familiar with those, it sounds like a pretty beautiful thing.
Yeah, they're, they're nice, because they can, they can, they control it better.
Okay. Last question, and I think I'm right when I say the north side of the Sears building, which is on the main entrance into the mall, so if you walk straight in. I didn't see anything on that wall. Is that wall just going to stay the way it is, or is it going to?
Yeah. So that, that wa, yeah, it's that little section right there. So our building is actually right on the property line, so we're not able to actually build anything over it. So what we're doing is enhancing it with different paint, in, in areas where we can add other, other material, we can do that, but it's very, very, there, there's no room. So we weren't enhancing that like we were everything else, because we just don't have the space to do that.
Are the windows going to be opened, so there's some transparency there, or are they going to be covered up? I mean, right now, it's, it's a pretty ugly scene walking down that.
It's dark, yeah. I, I don't know what Sears plans are for that.
And those are my questions.
All right, thank you. So with that, you guys want to go ahead and conclude your presentation?
Can I just go through a few of Katie's points that she brought up?
Certainly.
Okay. So this is, this is a great one, just to leave up here. So the connectivity to the mall, as we discussed in previous meetings, it's impossible to get TJ Maxx or Petco to get access to the mall, because where Sears is, you have to get to their loading dock, which is on the far left-hand side. So at one point, we discussed putting loading docks in a different area, and the answer was, no, we don't want loading docks off of Capitola or off of 41st. So our only option is to keep it where it is, in that back truck-loading dock corridor. And once we do that, it kind of eliminates, just by the design of it, getting direct access to it. But what we did create is this pedestrian-friendly zone, starting from Petco all the way through and around that space. So while we don't have direct access to the mall, we have, we do have great, a great experience going around the property to get into the mall. The connectivity to get to Target, we discussed in, in numerous meetings, it's, it's impossible to do now because of ADA. It's not, the, the slope and cross-slope is too steep, where if we provide a path there, we're going to get hit with accessibility issues, because you just can't get there. It's physically impossible to get there with the grading that we have now. So we can't connect that, because once we connect it, we have to provide accessible path to travel there, and we, we frankly can't do it physically, it's impossible. And then the, the parking areas, I don't remember, I wrote that down, but you had a comment on the parking areas in your, your presentation?
Parking areas? I, I know that I had requested just a sheet that would lay out exactly your calculation for parking, and, and number them for me, because there's a lot of property lines that overlap.
So on the cover, on the cover sheet, we have a parking matrix. So if you, if you zoom in, it's kind of in the center, yeah, right to the right, you'll see parking calculations. And so what we did, because we're really looking at three different ways to, to get the parking. One is what's required by code, two is what is required by the REA, and the REA is actually more stringent than what your code is. And then what we're providing. And what we're providing with phase-one and phase-two, so if you go to the very bottom with the two pads, even if we did them as restaurant, we still have, we still have ample of, ample parking to provide. So is what you're asking that we need to go through and label every stall on there, or does this suffice for, for what you need?
So in my, in my second incomplete letter, I was simply just asking for a site plan to have each, your numbers identified on parking spaces, so I could see what was, some of the property lines kind of bisect parking spaces, so just, so that I could second-check the work and make sure that you have exactly what was shown in these tables. But I don't want to get into complete and incomplete items.
I just think we could do that as a, we could have that as a condition, right? It doesn't have to be something?
I, I was unable to determine based on the plans that were submitted.
Then open space and public space was one of your comments as well, and I think if you go to the site plan, we've enhanced as much open space as we can in phase-one. Phase-two, we provided a lot more open spaces where the two 4,000-square-foot pads are going to be. We have outdoor plazas, we have outdoor seedings, we have connectivity from the public sector all the way through the property. So we've provided as much open space, public space, that we can do on a really tight site like this. I think that's, that's it for me. Thank you.
Well, maybe, I had a question also, I mean, concerning access and connectivity. Just, what's the rationale for being part of a mall, there's no access to the mall from the interior of these premises?
Yeah, what's that? Yeah, it's, it's really because of where Sears is. With Sears being where they are, getting to the loading dock, it prohibits us from getting access to there. And you see this happening, I would say, in a lot of malls across the country, where these big boxes are getting redeveloped and re-demised, where they only have access from the outside, whether it's a restaurant, or a gym, or, you know, a TJ Maxx. A lot of those no longer have access directly to the mall, because they, the way they operate and the way they brand and the way they do their, their operation is only from one entrance. So it's, it's traditional to see this happening, as these big boxes get turned over.
Okay, thank you. Anything further?
We're here to answer any additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, is there any other member of the public that would like to address the commission on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the microphone, but recognizing that there may be more questions for the applicant. Yes, Katie?
I would like to make a clarification that stormwater with the phase-one, phase-two pads would have to incorporate, that, that is part of this proposal, the phases. And under CEQA, we cannot review a project in pieces, you must look at the whole project. So for stormwater, stormwater has to address these future phases, as well as we would be looking at the development and circulation and traffic, also regarding that, to do our CEQA analysis.
I, I have a question, Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Given that, can we, or can the applicant do the appropriate stuff for, to meet CEQA, but that change in the phase-two? In other words, I don't know that if we, I don't know that we really know what we want in that whole phase-two component yet. So can that, can they meet what, and make it compliant with CEQA today?
Sure.
And then change that in the future?
They could build in stormwater improvements to bring it into compliance, knowing where those buildings are going to be sited.
If I might, a little bit of history on the phase-two pads. They were really never part of this project. They were requested to be included in a subsequent application by staff, but they are not part of what you are approving. Without the pads and without Katie and staff's acknowledgement that stormwater is potentially impacted by the development of those pads, if they're not part of this project, which they really shouldn't be considered part of, part of the project, the project is exempt from CEQA. There's a very clear exemption. Your city attorney can advise you on this with respect to existing buildings, demising, facade improvements. This project is exempt under CEQA. And so my recommendation is, take the pads out. The pads should not be part of this project. They were included at staff's request faithfully by the applicant, but you're not approving anything tonight with respect to the, to the out parcels. So let's just, let's just not approve anything, take those out, and this project should be deemed exempt under CEQA. Very simple.
I, I have just a little comment. You know, Mr. Waite, one of the things in this process is, you, you brought up, you, you read our general plan, you brought up some of the components of, that are expected in our general plan, that's a phased process, I get that, we take small increments, I get that, but part of it is that vision. And, and so what we asked for, it wasn't staff, it was, this planning commission asked... this planning commission asked for that vision, what i, what is a long-term, um, plan for this? And that's, that's why those pads are there today, because we wanted to see where that's at. And, and I think part of that also goes back to this, how we work together, because I think communication is a big part of where we're going with the vision. You, you, you folks have two hundred-plus Sears projects that, throughout the nation, that you're, you're working on this, forty of them in California. This isn't new to you, I, this, you have these projects going through every mall, so while it may be new to us, I guess we want to depend a little bit on, uh, your experience of this process, but some of that takes, I, I hate some trust in that process. And so I think for, I can speak for me, I wanted to see, do you have a vision to help us meet our general plan? Because this is what our general plan was, was calling for, so I wanna help you get through this first phase. Me as an individual, I, I can't speak for my other commissioners up here. And that concept, that vision of the Phase Two is, is part of that moving forward through the process. So how we can work out CEQA, we have an attorney, you, you're apparently have this experience, I think that's great, but we need to see that. I need to see that to feel comfortable and move forward.
And that's a fair comment, and I think for that reason, in good faith, it was included, so that you do have some sense of what the long-term vision is. But again, there's no approval with respect to that component, it's really provided to give you the roadmap down the road for what is to come, and as Blake alluded to, it will come, but right now, we're trying to get these tenants approved and get them in these spaces. And as to that, that project that is really before you, it is exempt under CEQA. And I think, I would hope that the staff and city attorney would concur on that, on that view.
We'll trust him to figure that out, thank you.
Now, if I may, um, I just wanna express that, I, I think I personally have as much interest in, um, seeing something happen there sooner than later. I'm no longer interested in tying this to Malone Geyer and waiting for them. But with that said, um, from your viewpoint, what's, what's the difference of whether we were to approve this project with conditions that have been identified by staff, which you would have to meet in any event, or to deny the current application without prejudice, and have you continue to work with staff to resolve those questions? And I would personally express, I, I would like to see this move along as quickly as possible. And to have us, because we all have the same interest here, um, and to have us try to work together, um, to make this happen. And so, I mean, from your perspective, what's, what's the distinction here? What's the best thing that we could do to move this project forward? And acknowledging that we have these deficiencies currently, that are, that are gonna have to be addressed.
Yeah, I think you put your, your finger on it, there, at this point, we've been at it for a couple of years now. Uh, we think the time is right to move this project forward. Uh, we think that unquestionably, staff can make the CEQA exemption that's required by law. Unquestionably, we can condition the project, this is a discretionary approval. Planning Commission has the discretion to condition the project based upon clearance from the county on environmental. If there is in fact BMP that needs to be incorporated into stormwater, you can impose that condition as well. If there are any other conditions that you wanna see implemented before building permits are issued, you absolutely have that discretion. But that's moving the project forward. To, to say, no, we're gonna deny you, start over, come back again, file a new application, that's number three. We're now at number three, application number three. Let's move forward, let's move forward with what we have. And if, if the planning commission is, is concerned about items that have been brought up by staff, that feel require additional attention, let's, let's put those conditions in, and we will deal with those. We will ensure that they are complied with, and staff will, will make sure that we comply with those conditions before we can get building permits issued. But that's moving the project forward, which is really what we're asking for this evening.
So are, are we done with the public part, are we gonna do our commission thing, or?
Well, yeah, we will, I, I, yeah, I think that we're done, that we were just, at this point, posing questions to the applicant. They were gracious to answer them, and so, uh, if there are no further questions from commissioners, uh, to the applicant, I will bring this back and, um, we'll, uh, you know, discuss it and take some action.
So who wants to start?
Well, I- It sounded like you already started.
Well, for me, um, this project never was about, uh, you know, working completely with Malone Geyer. This project for me was the first project that was coming in that related to our new general plan that we had adopted. And, um, you know, sort of the goals and visions that we had, uh, in that general plan. And, um, I agree with Commissioner Walsh, I thought when we had the conceptual review, that, uh, you know, one of the things that we talked about was, uh, you know, not just approving something on this one building, but what was going to happen on their entire property that was going to move forward, the, the goals and desires that had been outlined in our, in our general plan. And, um, uh, you know, for, for me, I think there has been, uh, you know, some tremendous improvement as far as, uh, you know, the Sears building itself and how it looks. As far as the Petco and the TJ Maxx, it seems to me that both of those are, you know, a, a long way away of, uh, from, as far as a design standard from, um, you know, tying this all together and doing a major improvement. I asked the question about, you know, the sidewalks and the connectivity, because again, to me, you know, putting in some new sidewalks and the bike lanes and that, uh, should be part of any project that's going to go forward now. I do have some, some great concerns about some of the technical aspects of the project. I mean, county environmental health, in my opinion, is basically another department within the city of Capitola, because we contract with them to do that kind of work for us. And, um, you know, if an applicant came in and said, well, you know, we haven't, um, gotten the necessary permits, we need to get from your public works department to, um, uh, do something. I think we would be quite concerned about that, and for me, uh, there's no difference between them clearing up the work that they need to do with county environmental health before they go forward. I, I have, um, you know, concerns about, uh, you know, the environment in CEQA and how all of that's going to work. And they say, oh, well, just approve this little part of the project, you know, sort of trust us that when Phase Two comes in, then we'll, we'll work on that, when, you know, I, I, I thought that we were going to get an application coming in that was going to be an application regarding, um, you know, some future improvements that were gonna happen on the whole site, that would work to, you know, achieve the goals that we wanted to have in, in our general plan. So, um, uh, you know, I, I wanna hear from my other commissioners, but at, at this point for me, you know, I don't see this being at a place where, you know, I'm, I would be willing to say, you know, I would recommend approval of this tonight with conditions, because, uh, frankly, you know, I, I think there are some, some issues that need to be worked out. You know, the planning commission does have the option of, um, you know, denying a project without prejudice, which means that they could, you know, come back in any time with it. Or, um, you know, one of the things I, I would like to find out from the staff, because in our new zoning regulations, which, um, you know, I'll let the attorneys fight about, but I believe our new zoning regulations do apply to this project. You know, we're supposed to have some sort of specific plan or something to, to, to work with even on, on this site. So, um, you know, I, uh, for me, there, there are still so many unanswered questions that, that I would be hard-pressed to approve this with conditions tonight.
I'm gonna-
Thank you, Susan.
With your permission, agree with a lot of the things that you said and add to a little bit.
Sure.
When we did the conceptual review, we talked about redevelopment versus remodeling, and we talked about the Sears building. Yes, we wanna see how it all ties into the overall, but given that we're not gonna get there with that, if I saw the building being redeveloped instead of new facades on one side that don't match the beautiful new facade on the other side, and one whole side that's in a main corridor of entry into the mall that's not, not really being touched, then I would think that we were being heard in wanting the development to move forward towards our vision. Doesn't all have to be done today, but the connectivity issue is a, is a big one in our mind. And if you look all over the state of California, pedestrian-friendly is critical to the economic development in different areas. I was watching something on Seaside, on the news just tonight before I came to this meeting about Seaside. You know, redoing their downtown, and the pedestrian friendliness of the area is critical, because that's what people need. I went and I, I drove by the Sears building today, and I looked hard at all of the different elements, and I tried to figure out how I could approve the, the first phase of the plan, and I, I just can't get there from the pedestrian perspective. I know that the truck egress and ingress is a big deal, and I looked at the plans, and I understand the, what you said about the grading, and I hadn't, hadn't really thought about that between Target and the Sears building, but people do walk that way. And by taking out the curbs and, and the, um, the bulbout landscaping that's there, it's actually gonna become more dangerous, because people coming out of that parking building up by Target are gonna come down that way, and there's gonna be a much wider spot for vehicle traffic to come peeling down there, and people do use that corridor to get from place to place. There was a guy out there walking his dog, and I thought, what, what's gonna happen when all of that, that corners off that parking area is gone, and it's all just flat concrete? It's gonna be, it's gonna be scary, and I think it's gonna introduce some pedestrian issues that we don't have today. So it actually doesn't take us towards our vision in that arena, it, it takes us a step back. We were clear about the opportunities of working in a phased approach and independently, and what I was really hoping we would see would be a, an approach, a, a, a plan that had a phased approach, that didn't just throw two pi, two pads out there, because that's what we wanna see, but that actually showed us in the design, in the, in the application, that there was a plan and a thought of how we were gonna move forward. And our vision is really clear, we were, we're not saying anything different tonight than we said in the conceptual review, and that was even discussed prior to that. The architectural features have made a lot of improvements, but I don't see the gathering place. I don't see that people are gonna come to that planner and hang out on the curb. I, that's not what I was looking for, I was looking for, uh, um, maybe a little cafe kind of environment of, of seating chairs, where, um, if you go over and you look at, some of the different areas in town that have sidewalk environments that are attractive, that do bring people in, there are not planners that, I can't even see how they're gonna be seating areas. So what we've communicated is that we want the mall area to create a sense of place, a place to gather, a place to shop, a place to eat. And the Sears building can do all of those things by itself. It just, in this, in this application, I don't see it doing those things. The goals and policies, the revisioning plan, all of those are really clear. They may include facade changes, but they shall not conflict with the ultimate direction. And unfortunately, in this case, the, the pedestrian element is, in my mind, in conflict. So I don't know how I could support this one tonight, I don't know what kind of conditions I would have to put on it, um, to change that. The, the technical ones, the, I could trust staff to write some conditions for those if they saw their way through to do that. But from a design perspective, if Maryland Geyer didn't exist on this planet, I'd still have a really hard time supporting this project.
Thank you, Blinder, TJ?
Was hoping my, uh, fellow commissioner, Thane, would go first, but what the heck, I'll jump in there, I, I always have something to say. I, I think it's, uh, the design review, if we're just talking about design first, has come tremendously a, a long ways, and, more than, I think, just putting lipstick on a pig, I think, for me, um, it's, it's in the ballpark. Now, I always confer with my wife, believe it or not, because I wanna have a happy home. And, uh, she's not wild about the Petco colors or the Petco walls, to be honest with you, she's not. So she's concurs with some of our fellow commissioners here, but, um, I'm all for getting this project going. Personally, I wanna see the tenants in there, I don't wanna see, that, that area you go through there now, it's a blighted industry, it's just terrible to go through there. I don't have a big issue with the pedestrian part, there's only one-way access in the mall currently, is through the Sears building. So that interconnected ability, if you, if you, uh, again, I, I mentioned I have a wife, and I, and I have to do some traveling, which means I have to do some shopping. The new environment isn't this indoor mall, in fact, if you went to the, uh, Geyer Malone, uh, preview that, whatever we, we called that, which by the way, was really disappointing, uh, and you can put that on the record, that, that's what people want, people wanted that building opened up, they don't wanna see that closed-in mall. So I think the outdoor experience, uh, I think the sidewalks, I think what we're asking is, you, you, the way I see this, is you have basically your hands tied as far as the building. I, I don't think, as a city, we can ask you to tear down and start from scratch, because we could really do something there. I think, given what you ha, excuse me, what you have, I think getting some tenants in there is a great deal. I think the vision of the phases, uh, are appropriate. You know, in the, in your back of your, um, plans there, you have some sketches of some bistro's and stuff, and I, I think those are appropriate-type things, I didn't see an In-N-Out Burger in there, but, um, I saw some things I think are appropriate for, uh, those phases. For me, it gave the vision. I guess for me, it, I, I have no problem moving forward personally with, with this project, under some conditions. Obviously, the ESA and the BMPs are something that we, we have to resolve. I don't see those as being overwhelming, I don't see them as a stop block, I just think that something has to be resolved. But what I would like to see, um, is, I think, um, one of my commissioners, fellow commissioners brought up the specific plan concept. And I know you guys are involved in the New Park Mall, which I think has the same type of concept, that we have a, a way of moving forward through these other phases, uh, with more people involved than, than you guys just throwing pictures at us. And maybe that's done through city staff, I don't, I don't really know, but, um, I think we need to have more discussion there. What else can I talk about, uh, we talked about the architectural style, I don't, I don't know how you make it. I, I'm sure someone can make it prettier, my wife thinks she can make it prettier for you, but I don't have a big heartburn, Petco is Petco. It's got some certain colors with it, how you design that, I don't know. That, that routing to get the trucks through there, I think is, is a, it handicaps us as far as, um, what we do with pedestrian thoroughfare to the Target. Well, we talked about the elevation, I, I, I would think, looking at getting those trucks, um, through the thirty-eighth entrance, around in front of Petco and around the corner, it seems to me, we could open up, uh, an entrance in between Takar and the, the parking structure and make that an easier thoroughfare for, um, deliveries and stuff, but that's just something that's on the side. I talked about a little bit of communication, and I, I, I don't know that, um, I think, uh, Seritage fell sh, a little short on communicating with our staff during the process, from the time this project started conceptual, till, uh, they got this letter that helped us get this on the, the plan, the agenda for tonight, I think you fell short of, of commun- I think you fell short of, of communicating. I think we should be able to, uh, fix that. Um, for me, when we look at the general plan, the big, the big concern is this Fortieth Avenue corridor. Um, I think you took some steps in, by putting the bike lanes and, and opening that up. And I understand that that may come through a second phase area, but I think that's something we really need to focus on. It's part of our general plan. It's something that we want to see. I don't think we can hang on, uh, and, and wait for, uh, Malongeier to, to jump into this. But we can certainly work on that area that you have, uh, a, a purview over coming in off of Capitola Road. So I think I pretty much addressed my issues. I don't, I honestly, I don't have a lot of big things. I could move forward if we could get past some of the, this conditioning.
And? So I'm not going to be lengthy here because I think we need to talk about what kind of action to take. Spend some time on that. Uh, I'm impressed by what the team has done here with at least the Sears building for sure. And some of the, uh, some of the grounds. And at the same time, I'm disappointed, uh, with what we have here and with the effort or lack of effort that was made to, uh, comply with sort of the direction that we provided, uh, eighteen months ago. The, it is the elephant to me. That's the concern here. Um, and that's what we said at the time of the conceptual hearing that before we gave up on the idea that there could be some form of integrated redevelopment of the mall, we at least had to make, uh, an effort. And I don't see that the effort has really been made here. And I'll, I'll just touch on that briefly, but, um, it's the general plan that I spent three years chairing to, uh, uh, have enacted in Capitola that isn't, um, being, I think, really advanced by this project. And it's the lack of integration with, um, the rest of the properties there. So the, the team told us that there are some features that are impossible to deal with. You can't, uh, deal with the, um, connectivity to the west and you can't deal with the connectivity in the mall. Well, that's the point. If it's done piece by piece, yes, those are impossible. But if there's some overall vision that can be advanced, then maybe they, those aren't impossible. And at some point, we may have to give up the ghost on this, I know. But I, I just don't think I'm ready at this point to do that. Um, I don't think that the Petco and TJ Maxx buildings as drawn, um, meet the requirement of the general plan in terms of, um, maintaining the unique coastal character of Capitola. They seem to me like they're not at all, um, consistent with Capitola's character, but maybe that can't be helped. I don't know. But in Mr. Waite's letter, he says that the approval of the application will in no way interfere with or impair future redevelopment of the mall. And then he goes on to say that it will create jobs and taxes, but I didn't, that was a non sequitur to me. I mean, I don't see how it doesn't impair the future redevelopment of the mall because it creates jobs and taxes right now. So that goes back to the point I made that I think that's the big issue. And I think what we need to talk about, because I think there's, there aren't enough votes to approve this tonight. Let me put it that way. So I think after we hear from the chairman, we should kind of spend some time on what the proper actions.
Yeah, and, and I won't belabor this either so that we can get to the substance of the evening. Um, but I'll have to say that, um, I, I've had a lot of frustration with this project and it's not about Saritage. It's about Malongeier. Um, and it seems to me that we've been put in a place and we're, uh, it's the classic case of, of sacrificing the better for the best. Um, and, and I'm not sure if we're ever going to get, uh, what our vision was, uh, that we, uh, developed. There's already a part of the vision in the general plan about Fortieth Avenue and Malongeier has already expressed to us, they're not going to do that. Um, so I think that we have to let go of some of that vision and look at where we are and then try to move forward. Take a step. Um, and I, and, uh, you know, on the designs, um, some of them I like, some of them I don't like. I think that's kind of subjective. I think there's a lot of forces that go behind creating these designs, these businesses. They know what's best to attract customers and, um, and to generate sales. And that's in essence what I, I think ultimately this is about, is a commercial place. Um, and for, uh, citizens of the community to be able to go into these shops and, um, and get the things that they need. Um, so, um, I've been frustrated about how, I, I guess, complex and difficult this has become. I'm in a position of being prepared, uh, to, uh, move this forward in some way. Um, and, and if we wanted to have arc and psych or design, uh, conditions placed on it, then maybe we could do that. I would be willing to do that, um, just so that we can start to move forward with something, um, instead of just perpetually letting it languish. Um, to me, which is another danger because if you don't do something, it could languish and, and then it is a slippery slope. Um, and, you know, you lose your customer base, uh, and you may never recover from that regardless of how fabulous of a facility you create. Um, so I'm interested in movement. I'm interested in things, things happen there, different things happening there. I think that that's what would attract the community attention, seeing something happening there. Um, but, so that's, that's, you know, I, I think my personal opinion on it. But with that said, maybe we should talk about, because I, I don't see the votes here this evening, uh, to, to carry that. But maybe we could talk about, uh, how we want to structure, um, an action on this, on this item.
And I, I, I will say, I think what, how we want to structure an action that's going to, you know, allow something to ultimately happen. There just needs to be, you know, um, a process for how.
Can I ask, can I just ask, what, what would be the expectation to change for those three occupancies? What, what do you want to see different? I, I, I don't know how we, we, um, set an expectation without tying Malongeier to this and, and quite frankly, I don't think we can. And I, and I'm tired of waiting for them. I, I think, uh, if we do that, we're going to.
This project came into me and, you know, Malongeier hadn't bought the mall. I still would not approve what they have presented here tonight.
Okay, I, I can accept that, but I'm asking, what would you want to see different? What's going to change that to get that through? Because I don't, I don't understand what would, is it design, the re, the, the looks of the buildings? What, what is, what is, what would you like to see that would get it through?
First of all, I think the, the process needs to, to be followed properly. And I think, uh, you know, the technical issues need to be dealt with.
Totally understood, yeah. That's understood.
You didn't say this is not complete in your letter, so, you know, we're, we're here before you. Um, uh, and I think maybe, um, Commissioner Newman has some ideas about, you know, what action we could take or we should talk about that, that, um.
My impression is from the way this has come to us, uh, which is perfectly okay that the applicant who's been at this a long time has forced it with the Permit Streamlining Act and asserted their rights. And as they have a right to do. I think a denial to go back and redesign and do this and do that does not, is not consistent with that, uh, at this point. I think I would prefer just a denial and an, an appeal, uh, if that's the way they want to go with it from my standpoint. And the reason for my denial would not be as much the technical issues as the, uh, lack of compliance with the general plan.
And so can I ask you, where, where do you think the lack of compliance is at?
Well, the ideas.
No, good. I'd like, no, because I want to hear them because I, I, obviously I studied the general plan. I looked at it thoroughly. And I get the pedestrian, uh, disco- we talked about the, the bike. I get that whole. But based on just this project, if we put through that Fortieth Avenue and, and they were consistent with doing that and doing the, uh, gathering places with the bistros and stuff that they, where do you, how do you see this not?
I, I'm not following what you're saying.
Did, oh, so on the last page of their plans?
On there, uh, on the pads?
Yeah, they have the concepts of the pads with outdoor dining. They have the Fortieth Avenue going through there. You have the bike wa- ways going through there, so.
That's not part of this application.
Right, and they've made it very clear.
They, they, they only want to talk about the tenant improvements.
Well, I guess where I'm at is, that is a condition for me I have written right here, is that, is that that is part of this. We'll move this project on with this concept that they're going to move forward. And I think we heard tonight that.
But then, then we do have to deal with the environmental review issue. And, um, you know, I don't, I don't think you can make a finding that you don't have to do environmental review for the project at that point. You do.
I, I guess I would, is that what our attorney says?
You, you cannot, um, you cannot piecemeal a project under SEQA. On the other hand, um, SEQA requires that a project have enough definition before you go forward that you can analyze the, um, the impacts of it. So if you were, um, inclined to, uh, to, to, uh, approve the project with the pads, um, I think what you would do is, uh, is, um, you'd have to, we'd have to do the environmental review. If you approved the project without the pads and conditioned the project with the amenities that come along with the second phase, and the first phase make them part of the project, the, the first phase project instead of waiting for the second phase, then I think the piecemeal issue goes away.
Okay. Does that work or is that, you still have?
You know, I just want to throw in some, a couple of cents if I can, just because I'm, I'm watching this bounce back and forth between you and them and I'm getting in the middle of it now. Um, we've been at this a long time too. We've been thinking about it. We've been looking at it. We've been talking to you guys for a long time. And it's, it's not clear to me that, I'm, I'm just going to put it out there, okay? What I see when I look at this project is a, um, you know, slap some paint on it, throw up a couple of, of things to satisfy two new tenants and give us lip service for what they think we want to hear and let's get it approved, let's move it on. And I'm really ready, on the other end of the spectrum from moving it forward, to say, stop. And this is the, the second time we've, we've had this discussion. We haven't made much progress. I don't see a lot of changes from what I saw in the concept review. I know that there are some, there's some landscaping, but in the, in the bigger picture, it's not moving towards the vision.
Well, I guess I, and I'm not them. I don't understand what your vision is at the end. Because if I look, and it's very subjective, I guess, but if I look at the general plan and I look at what they've given us as far as that vision in the future, to me, I think they're, they're right on board. So I guess maybe it's me that's missing it, but I, I don't see that.
So if we deny this project without prejudice, that means that they can go back. I mean, it's, it's, in some ways, it's close to continuing it because they're not restricted to not being able to come back for another year. They, they need to, they can go back and, you know, develop their plan and come back with it at any time that they want. I mean, there, there, we would, it need, need at least one more full meeting to go through coming up with conditions, in my mind, that we would have to place on this project. Um, I mean, there's, there is not adequate landscaping plans. I don't understand, you know, the trellises, which are the main things go- going on their building. Uh, you know, we, we don't have that information tonight. So, uh, you know, I think we're at a place tonight where, um, you know, we, we need to deny the project. Uh, the question is, do we do it with or without prejudice? And I go back to my thing. I, I don't, I don't understand why there can't be, you know, some sort of specific plan for sort of this area, this property, how, how, how it's going to, to work. I mean, we talked about that in our new zoning regulations. That was one of the things that we wanted. Because if we had that, then we could see how this was all going to evolve and work together. And, um, so, I mean, I don't, I don't know if staff have any ideas about, um, you know, going down that kind of, of road.
Yeah, if, if the project were denied without prejudice, they could come back in in the next month or two with a similar application with all the items that you requested this evening. If it was a denial, um, with prejudice, just straight denial, they would not be able to resubmit an application for a one-year period. In that time, you could, of course, direct staff to start working on a specific plan and the, to, for the city to initiate it. And in, under that scenario, we would be working with the property owner, you know. We'd come back to you with the details of what that would look like at this juncture. I can't tell you exactly what that would look like, but it'd be a, some type of, a, a, an effort to work within the mall property towards a specific plan to capture that vision, so.
Oh, we often, we often, um, send applicants back with a denial to come back in a short period of time with changes. I don't think that this project fits that mold because they have forced the issue and deliberately because they want to get decisive action here. And so I think that we should give them that, whether it's an approval with conditions or a denial, and then let them move, uh, ahead with whatever remedies they have, which is the city council, of course. And get this thing resolved because it is the, to me, it's the bigger issue. It's not the drainage issue.
Right.
So can, can I ask, so if we deny it without prejudice, that doesn't eliminate them still appealing the application to the city council?
Correct. They would have two options then, which would be to come back to the planning commission with your sugg- suggested or go straight to the city council on an appeal.
I think it would be better to, um, move this up to the city council.
Okay. Well, I'm going to call for a motion then at this time. Somebody want to make a motion?
Well, I'll jump in there because I was ready to approve it on condition. So if we're, if we're not going to get there, which it looks like we're not, then I would say we, um, deny it, um, without prejudice. And they could bring it back to us. I, I, you know, just, just to clarify a little bit, I, I hate to not do what I feel like is our, our due diligence and just punt to the city council. I think that this is what we're here for. And so for me, I'd like to see us complete this project before it goes to the city council. So I'd make a motion that we deny it without prejudice.
And there's a motion? Yes, John?
Uh, Commissioner Newman and Commissioner Westman both indicated that they had, uh, general plan concerns that might not have reflected in the agenda report. And it would be good for staff to hear those so we could, uh, include those reasons for denial, which are the commission's reasons for denial in any resolution we prepare that would go up to the city council.
Mine are included in the staff report, pretty much.
Do you have any that aren't included?
Uh, mine, mine are pretty much in there. Uh, I, you know, it's sort of the, um, the public access, the pedestrian use, the si- sidewalks, connectivity. You know, I don't think those are in, in this particular application.
Okay. There's a motion. Uh, is there a second? Going.
Can we make another motion?
Well, if, well, if nobody seconds, then that one's going to fail, so then we will have another motion. I hear no second, so the motion fails.
Ed, do you want to?
You go.
It's always me.
Yes, you.
Uh, I, I'll make a motion to deny the project.
I'll second it.
Clarification, that's without, um, any indication of with prejudice or without prejudice?
Uh, that's with prejudice.
That's with prejudice. Okay. So there's a motion and a second.
So there's a motion and a second. Um, I'm going to call for, um, a roll call vote.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
No.
Commissioner Westman?
Yes.
Chairperson Story?
No. The motion passes three to two. That brings us to item six, which is the director's report.
No report this evening.
Okay. Um, and finally, it's commission communications. Any, uh, communications? So we've communicated enough this evening.
It was nice to have John here tonight.
Hello again.
Yes.
Thanks, John.
Thanks for being here, John. Um, with that, um, I'll adjourn this meeting, uh, to the, um, July, um-